Okay, I see the recording light has gone on, which also means that we are on air even though we have been on air. Good morning, everyone, and thank you for attending this meeting remotely. This is a continuation of the State Bar Board of Trustees regular January meeting, which was begun yesterday. For those of us who have joined us for a second day, welcome back. For everybody who is new this morning, welcome. We're glad to know that you're participating. Just as a very quick recap of where we find ourselves. Yesterday, the board in the first part of the day engaged in some strategic planning on a couple of major initiatives. I personally felt like it was a very informative and productive time. So, thank you to the trustees for your active participation and your thoughts. Thank you to our staff and to everyone who presented, Justice Petru and the others, Professor Sklar and others. And thank you for those members of the public who were observing. And we appreciate your interest in these important issues. Today's agenda will be the continuation of the meeting that was begun at 2:30 yesterday. For those of you who are with us, you will recall that we opened that public meeting and went pretty much right into closed session, having calls for public comment. There was no public comment on the closed session items. I will inform, remind the board and inform the members of the public that the board did not make it all the way through its closed session agenda yesterday. So if you are looking at the agenda, you will see items 5001 with four subparts and then 7001 through 7005. The board did discuss 7001 and 7005 and is still in the process of that discussion. 7002 through 4 were not discussed but will be when we take up the closed session again. There are a couple of items on 5001 that will be moved to open session. And before I get into any official moving of the agenda, how about if we take role, Madam Secretary?
Broughton?
Here.
Chen?
Here.
Cisneros?
Here.
Dela Cruz?
Here.
Dillon? You're on mute. You're muted.
The record will note that trustee Dillon, yes.
Gonog?
Here.
Pertula?
Here.
Shelby?
Present.
Soal?
Present.
Stallings?
Here.
Tony?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Okay, as I was about to say, there are a couple of items that are listed in the closed session under 5001 that without objection, I'd like to ask the board to move into our open session. They do not necessarily need to be in closed session. And if I could get some help from Ms. Schurkowitz as to the specific items, I would appreciate that.
Certainly. So it's actually all of 5001 was inadvertently put on the closed session. They are appropriate for the open session agenda. And so we'd be moving those to the open session consent agenda.
Okay, we will just keep it in the order that it appears since it'll be after the miscellaneous item, if that's okay. Okay, so when the board finished its work yesterday evening in closed session, the intention was to convene this morning and to pop back into closed session. I have spent some time thinking about it. And with the board's indulgence, I would ask that we actually do take up the open session items first this morning. My reasons for that are a couple. First of all, we have, looks like 100 participants in the meeting, a fair number of whom I'm sure are interested members of the public who want to share their thoughts and concerns with the board under public comment, which we always welcome and look forward to. So I would like to allow folks to do that and not have to wait for us to come out of closed session. And then we can take up the business first thing in the morning, let the staff get back to work after we're done with our open session items and go into closed session then. Does the board have any major issues with any of that? Okay, I don't see any. Great, thank you so much. Okay, so we're going to move on to public comment. This is the portion of the meeting where members of the public are encouraged to address the board on issues that are on the agenda or otherwise within the bar's sphere of influence. I'm going to ask Mr. McLeod's assistance in recognizing members of the public who have indicated their desire to speak. So far, it looks like we have three, four. You will be led into the meeting and notified when your time is begun. I am looking at many, many raised hands. And so without objection, I hope, I'm going to ask for a little bit of discretion and limit public comments to two minutes as opposed to three so that more people have an opportunity to speak. And for those of you who are taking the time to speak to us, if there's any way to keep your comments with less than two minutes to avoid repetition of other commenters, that would certainly most be appreciated.
Mr. Chair?
Anything? Yeah?
So I apologize, just a reminder. We are anticipating a few elected district attorneys here to provide public comment today on item 705. Out of respect for the tightness of their schedules, we have indicated that we would take them out of order. So if Mr. McLeod could identify the elected district attorneys to start with.
So I am not seeing the names of the elected district attorneys. I am, however, seeing the name of the executive director of the Prosecutors Alliance, who I believe is part of the group of elected district attorneys who requested to be allowed to speak at the outset of the meeting. I'm going to open her mic. Christina, Christine, excuse me, Soto de Barry, you have the mic and you have two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, trustees. I appreciate the opportunity to address you quickly. Just before I begin, I believe Joseph Piniérez is speaking on behalf of DA Gascon, so you may find him in the comments. But we submitted a letter back to the California State Bar back in August, July, I believe, requesting your engagement in a critically important issue to Californians. We all saw last summer the need for reform around how we regulate police in the most critical incidents, those involving the taking of life of civilians. And the measure that we have before you is a narrowly tailored effort to try and improve the independence of prosecutors when they are making these most important decisions. We've seen in recent DA elections, the heavy influence of police unions through political contributions to those candidates and the concern that it raises in the larger community about the actual independence of those prosecutors when sitting in judgment, both in the investigation and potential charging of police officers for the excessive use of force. We believe that the request here is narrowly tailored to meet a very important government interest. Perhaps there's none more important than the state's evaluation of whether a state actor has taken a civilian's life through justified or unjustified means. It appears to us to be one of the most important issues for our government. We also would love to point to the trustees that there is some statistical evidence. There was recent polling during the Los Angeles District Attorney's race that showed seven out of 10 voters wanted a candidate that did not take contributions from police unions because they wanted their prosecutor to be independent of those influences. We're urging you to pass proposal one, which would provide Californians with the assurance that there is not a conflict of interest when their elected prosecutor sits in judgment of the use of force of police officers in their jurisdiction. This proposal is the most effective to meet the important needs of Californians. If there are more questions, evidence, or study that needs to happen, we would welcome the opportunity to engage with all of you in that, ask that you continue to pursue this path versus the other options. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker will be Mr. Chesa Boudin, the district attorney of the city and county of San Francisco.
Good morning, and thank you all for your work and attention to this important matter. I want to echo the comments of the prior speaker, Christine DeBarry, and urge you to adopt option one. This is a critical issue for public safety and for public trust in law enforcement. We must work every single day very closely with our law enforcement partners in various policing agencies, sheriffs, police, and more, highway patrol. We work with them. We work with them closely. We have a tight and in many ways inseparable partnership. And yet there are those cases, always high profile, where we must also critically evaluate the use of force by members of those groups. If the public is to have confidence and trust in the decisions we make, whether it is to decline to file charges or whether it is to file charges, we must have a clear separation. And there is no clearer, simpler, more straightforward way to do it than to prohibit district attorneys from accepting funds directly from law enforcement units that would create this conflict or at a minimum in appearance of a conflict of interest that can be so damaging to public trust. It's a simple issue. It has no effect whatsoever, contrary to many of the public comments at prior hearings on First Amendment issues for law enforcement groups. They can and will continue to spend freely on making their voice heard and advocating for issues from their perspective. This is simply a question in San Francisco, for example, of prohibiting someone in my shoes or seeking my office from accepting the $500 maximum contribution that could be given from any particular union.
Mr. Boudin, you have 10 seconds remaining. Thank you.
A critical and simple step, and I urge you to adopt option one for the safety and integrity of the entire criminal justice system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boudin. The next speaker will be Bridget Fladiger, excuse me, Fladiger, district attorney, I believe, Stanislaus County.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Good morning.
All right, good morning. I'll just take a few minutes, just very quickly. I've been the district attorney in Stanislaus County. Now I'm in my fourth term. And I can tell you that district attorneys work very hard to do the best they can always. And I don't let the support of law enforcement sway me one way or the other. I can't tell you the number of police officers we have prosecuted since I've been the district attorney. I think this goes way further than it needs to go. It suggests there's a problem where there's not a problem. If you wish to provide further guidance, you may certainly do that. But the prosecutors I know and the elected DAs I know are highly ethical people, always do the right thing. And the suggestion that they don't, I think, is really tenuous and unwarranted. The support of law enforcement, quite frankly, they are the people, they are in the best position to advise the public if you have a district attorney doing the right thing or not doing the right thing. And taking away the ability for prosecutors to say, you need to rely on these law enforcement officers, they know what my deputies are doing in the courtroom, is really undermining and hands all the power to people who want to put someone in place who maybe isn't ethical and has other motives. So I would just ask you to consider that and really take a look and assess that there is, this is a solution that is not necessary because we don't have the problem. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to continue public comment moving in order in which the hands appear. I don't have any other names that I recognize from the district attorneys. So we're going to move next to Gavin Wieland. Gavin Wieland, the mic is going to be made available to you. You have it now, and you have two minutes to make comments. I'm not sure if I want to try to unmute that. I just muted it after we got all of that. Perhaps there was a technical. Okay, we're going to move on to Mr. Julian Sarkar will be the next speaker. Mr. Sarkar, you have the microphone, you need to unmute it, and you have two minutes. Mr. Sarkar?
Thank you, sir.
You've got your mic.
Thank you. My name is Julian Sarkar. I'm calling in to oppose the post-change to the exam accommodations applications process and the ExamSoft contract. The State Bar should consider following the state of Indiana's successful open book exam, which will largely resolve both these issues, if not to form a privilege. In its proposal, the Office of Admissions complained, without providing specific details, that disabled applicants are seeking review of its decisions more than once. The Office of Admissions complains that these requests are inconsistent with how administrative appeals are handled. Interesting thingly, the proposal does not state that the accommodations applications are being handled in a manner that are consistent with state and federal law, which would explain why those applicants need to ask the Office of Admissions to comply more than once. The proposal would limit all review requests to a deadline of 35 days before the exam. This would allow the Office of Admissions to issue their decisions after that deadline, which would prevent those applicants from seeking review entirely of their decisions for their accommodations request. As of a week and a half ago, the Office of Admissions had disabled access to the accommodations application form, which prevented applicants from applying for accommodations in the first place. So aren't they working hard enough to keep disabled applicants out of the legal profession as it is? As for ExamSoft, we have seen the Office of Admissions institute disciplinary proceedings because, I quote, "you were observed," unquote. And the Office of Admissions would also institute disciplinary proceedings against other applicants because they weren't observed.
Mr. Sarkar, you have 10 seconds. Thank you.
Okay. So I ask the board to protect the public from these improper activities and reject the ExamSoft contract. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker, we identified another elected district attorney in the list of attendees, Vern Pearson. Vern Pearson will be our next speaker, and you have the microphone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate being able to speak with you here today. I am the elected DA in El Dorado County, as I have been for the last 14 years. I'm also the president of the California District Attorneys Association. And just in addition to that, I am a former deputy attorney general here in the state of California. And I'm someone who, in the course of my 29 years as a prosecutor, has personally investigated and prosecuted police officers for misconduct, both as a deputy DA, a DA, and as a deputy attorney general. I understand the rules and these types of investigations, the California Constitution. And I'm also, I should indicate as well, have been and continue to be an instructor for use of force investigations for the state of California. With that, I would say the, I have several different problems, and I know the time is limited with this recommendation, but not the least of which is that it ignores the conflict statutes that are in the various laws related to conflict of interest. And when the California Attorney General can step into these types of cases, as someone who has actually done that, come into a county and taken a case of this kind away from a local district attorney, it's, this is just misplaced. And it, more importantly, it ignores the change in a law that took place last year with 1506, which the governor signed in the law, McCarty's bill, which changes the way use of force investigations are investigated and shifts a significant.
Mr. Pearson, you have 10 seconds. Thank you.
All right, we shift responsibility away. All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pearson. The next speaker will be Nancy Pemberton. Ms. Pemberton, you have the microphone, and you will have two minutes.
Thank you. I'm calling in to support option one of amendments or item 705. I think that neither of the two district attorneys who offered opposition to this have addressed the issue of the public's faith in the criminal justice system. I think that this would send a serious message to the public that we are serious about separating the duties and the relationships between the DAs and the police officers. And for that reason, I suggest, I urge you to support option A. I think that it can do, it offers a lot of, it offers competence and transparency to the public in a time when it's desperately needed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker will be Peter Kloon. Mr. Kloon, your microphone has been made available to you. It's now unmuted. You have two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'm calling into number 705 and also want to urge the board to accept proposal A, as proposed by the DAs. And, you know, I'm, I'm not a lawyer. I'm just a resident of California who lives in Los Angeles. And here, you know, we've seen, you know, a recent turnover in our elected DA. But before that, years of an elected DA who adamantly refused to prosecute officer-involved shootings and who also took millions of dollars from local law enforcement. And, you know, and, you know, you can't draw a straight line between those two things, but I can tell you that within our city, it was deeply corrosive. And the perception of what's happening there, not just in officer-involved shootings, but in every possible interaction. You know, it was sort of amazing to hear DA Fladiger sort of mention the idea that, you know, law enforcement should, that opinion should be privileged, that somehow they have better insight into the functioning of the DA's office and then ought to be put forward. And I think in that way is sort of telling on herself and telling on sort of what the status quo is. Because I can tell you, as a member of the public watching these things, it doesn't look right to me, and I don't trust it. I don't. I don't trust it. When you see that money moving, we all know what's happening. And so I really urge you to support that first option, and please take that action. I would like to be able to look at my public elected officials.
You have 10 seconds.
And have full confidence in the actions that they're taking. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Stephen Mineath. Mr. Mineath, your microphone has been made available to you. It needs to be unmuted. Once it's unmuted, you will have two minutes.
Thank you, and good morning, trustees. My name is Stephen Mineath. I'm offering comment on agenda item 705. For many years, I served as counsel to the California State Senate Committee on Public Safety, where I advised the legislature on, among other things, police practices. The relationship between the police and prosecutors is of necessity, a very close relationship. The police act as investigators for the prosecutor as well as witnesses for the prosecution. Therefore, prosecutors are regularly called upon to evaluate the credibility of the police and oftentimes vouch for their credibility. Additionally, where misconduct is alleged on the part of the police, prosecutors must impartially evaluate the conduct of the police. For all these reasons, the relationship, while close, also needs to be at arm's length, both as perceived by the public and in reality. When police unions and trade associations are permitted to make financial contributions to prosecutors and candidates for district attorney, it creates an ethical conflict of interest and it erodes public confidence in the integrity of the criminal justice system. For these reasons, I urge you to accept proposal A by the Prosecutors Alliance. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mineath. The next speaker is listed as Erin M. Erin M., your microphone's been made available to you. It's unmuted. You have two minutes. Thank you.
Hello, thank you for your time. I wanted to comment on item 705 as well. I am a lifelong constituent of Los Angeles, specifically Los Angeles City. And I have seen firsthand the erosion and have, have lost confidence in our proceedings, given the position of Jackie Lacy and the involvement of, or lack of integrity shown by Officer Sheriff Vianueva and the hundreds of police-involved shootings. So I wanted to echo DA Gascon's office in supporting proposal A or adopting option one to make sure that there is some integrity and investigate all that are involved in these police-involved shootings and hold the police accountable, as I have seen firsthand that there has been none. And, and really fear for my fellow constituents, my family members, and, and, you know, my future offspring as, as to, you know, how we could live peacefully and without, without any, any fear that, that, you know, these officers would go on without consequence. So yes, support option or proposal A, option one, and make it unethical for the prosecutors to accept campaign contributions as they have before without any action. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker will be Vicki White. Is White, your microphone's been made available to you. It's still, it's now unmuted. You have two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Vicki White. I am a California resident in San Diego, and I'm calling to urge this group to adopt the ethics regulation regarding the restriction of police union or law enforcement association contributions to elected district attorney and prosecutor positions. I think, as other callers have said, it creates a perception of conflict of interest during a time when the communities are trying to hold prosecutors and police accountable for impacts on, on public safety as a result of their actions and grievous bodily harm and killings. I know as a resident, I've lost a lot of trust in, in my elected district attorney because of the perception of an overly close relationship there. So I urge you to take action to restrict these contributions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is listed as Jay Marie. Your microphone is available. It does not yet appear to be muted. There you are. You have two minutes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, and thank you all for your time today. I also would actually just like to speak to agenda item 705. And I'm just asking that the board please accept that proposal proposed by the DA, proposal A proposed by the DAs. I am an organizer here in Los Angeles, California, and we have always participated in peaceful protests. We urge peaceful protests. We are not those that are causing disruption. However, we do believe that the way things are handled, especially with the police officers not being held accountable, it does cause an uproar in the public. And I would love to see that there be a new and reestablished relationship with the police departments, with the district attorneys, with the public, so that we can all come together and just as we all kind of feel like a sense of relief right now possibly, and just trying to bring peace and unity against, with everyone. I just hope that you all can find it in your hearts and just even in the having the wisdom on how to move forward by accepting this proposal, because I truly think it's going to help reestablish the faith that the community has with not only the police officers but with all officials that are in charge of the justice system. So I truly look forward to seeing this change, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments. The next speaker will be Jasjit Singh. Jasjit Singh, your microphone's available to you. You have two minutes. Thank you.
Hey, good morning, everyone. My name is Jasjit Singh. I'm calling on behalf of California Change Lawyers to offer a comment in support of option A and/or proposal A for agenda item 705. For us, it's clear that the public has lost faith in the criminal justice system's ability to hold law enforcement accountable for criminal misconduct, allowing elected prosecutors to accept millions in campaign contributions from police unions serves to further the distrust by creating both an actual and a perceived conflict of interest by rendering unethical for prosecutors to accept campaign contributions from law enforcement unions. We believe that the State Bar can cure that conflict and promote prosecutorial independence. We don't believe that the other proposals will be sufficient enough to ensure prosecutors don't accept law enforcement association contributions, and therefore they would be inadequate to change behavior. So we urge the board to accept proposal A and/or option one proposed by the DAs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Singh. The next speaker will be Kari Malki. Ms. Malki, your microphone's available to you. You have two minutes. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kari, and I'm calling in on behalf of the Ella Baker Center for Human Rights, based in Oakland, California, to also offer comment on proposal A on agenda item 705. As others have mentioned, faith in our criminal legal system has eroded dramatically in recent years, particularly after last year, due in part to the increasingly widespread perception that officers are not held accountable. that officers are not held accountable for criminal conduct, most strikingly as prior speakers have discussed, when officers take the lives of our community members. And prosecutors do further feel this distrust when they solicit and accept political and financial support from law enforcement associations. We know that proposal A is the only option strong enough to, to force prosecutors to do more ethical work. And we strongly urge the board to adopt option one proposed by DAs themselves. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. The next speaker will be Selena Copeland of the Legal Aid Association of California. Ms. Copeland, your microphone's available. You have two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm actually commenting in support of item number one twelve, the legislative priorities proposal to increase the eligibility threshold for free legal services. And I understand that the executive committee voted in support yesterday. So I want to thank the board for their support of the proposal and hope that the full board votes in support today. And although I want to acknowledge this will be increasing the pool of people who would be eligible for free legal services in a time in which some grants have decreased dramatically. We believe that this is an important long-term change to be able to help more people when our funding streams increase after the pandemic created recession. We invite the board of trustees, also as one of your commitments in your strategic plan, to continue to support increased funding for free legal services. What's been really clear in this pandemic is that a lot of people have been impacted by losing jobs, even, you know, temporarily or for a longer time, and they are newly living close to the poverty level. And this will allow us to help many more people. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker will be Alexander Post. Your microphone's available. You have two minutes.
Good morning, board. Thank you very much. I am calling in support of proposal one on agenda item seven oh five. I'm a member of the California Bar, San Francisco resident. I'd like to echo the comments made by my district attorney, Mr. Boudin, and just point out a specific example, which is that a couple of years ago, during the Stefan Clark investigation, it came out that the police associations in Sacramento had donated money to the district attorney there. Obviously, that's a pretty ugly direct conflict of interest. And that's the sort of thing that we should try to avoid. I'm a public defender myself. My clients obviously don't have, you have $13,000 to send to the district attorney when they are under investigation, but I think we can all agree that, that that would also be pretty gross. So I think simply leveling the playing field, eliminating this conflict of interest is clearly the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker will be Omar Figueroa.
Mr. McLeod, if I may, we've had a lag a couple of times before the speaker comes on, before we can hear the speaker. So I would ask each of the public commenters, before you start, just, just ask if we can hear you. And then we will give you a positive on that and then you can proceed so we can make sure to hear your full comment.
Good morning, trustees. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. My name is Omar Figueroa and I have been a member of the state bar for more than two decades. Practicing in the California criminal courts as a freedom defense lawyer, I have represented criminal defendants in more than 30 counties all over the state, including counties such as Stanislaus County and El Dorado County. I speak in support of prosecutorial independence and the conflict of interest that arises when prosecutors investigate alleged criminal misconduct by police officers who are represented by police unions who bankroll political campaigns by those same prosecutors. It is clear that the public has lost faith in the criminal justice system's ability to hold law enforcement accountable for criminal misconduct. Allowing elected prosecutors to accept millions in campaign contributions from police unions creates an apparent and actual conflict of interest. Police advance prosecutorial independence by rendering it unethical for prosecutors to accept campaign contributions from law enforcement unions. A couple of prosecutors have taken the time to come here and tell you that there's nothing to worry about. They can be independent. The police unions know which prosecutors are the best. These prosecutors don't get it. This is not about valiant prosecutorial independence in the face of pressure by law enforcement unions, but about removing that pressure by law enforcement unions in the first place. Luckily, some prosecutors do get it and courageous prosecutors such as George Gascon and Chesa Boudin have started a group called the Prosecutors Alliance of California, which proposed option one before you. I urge the board to accept option one proposed by the Prosecutors Alliance of California and the ACLU. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker will be Allison Foster. Your microphone's available. Microphone's available.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much to the board for their time. I'm calling to oppose proposal A on agenda seven oh five. My opinion is that you can't prohibit one type of contributor to a DA campaign under the assumption that the contributor is getting a benefit from their contribution without applying that same rule to any entity that contributes to a campaign. It's either all or none. For me, the irony is that the DAs who are suggesting this proposal are proof that police unions don't monopolize this process. Otherwise, they wouldn't have been elected. They are one of many voices. DA campaigns are won and lost all over the state. I don't think we should assume that everyone who wins extends political favors outside the boundaries of the law. But if we're going to make that assumption, that we have to assume it for all contributions from all types of entities. For me, the other irony here is that what this proposal does is exactly what the constitution is supposed to protect us against. And it feels like an attempt to suppress peaceful political free speech, especially those of our rivals. I believe that we have a system that is already designed to address the concerns that are expressed behind this proposal. There is clarity to the voters through public disclosure of our campaign contributions. People are able to get public records through the Public Records Act. Every elected official of all categories, including DAs, will come in and make policy changes and as a resident of California, that's okay for me to, to a degree. But what I believe is happening here is an attempt to silence or suppress the voices who supported their opponents. And so I thank you for your time to speak today.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker will be Lisa Little. Lisa Little, your microphone's available?
Yes, hello. I, my name's Lisa Liddell. I'm in San Jose, Santa Clara County. I'm a commissioner with the county and a national organizer and activist for social justice. And I am calling to offer comment on agenda item seven oh five addressing the conflict of interest that arises when prosecutors investigate alleged criminal misconduct by police officers who are represented by the same police unions who bankrolled said prosecutors' campaigns. This just seems like a clear violation and unethical. Really, we need independence of prosecutors. We need no conflict of interest. This is a critical safety and trust issue. And we know from the Capitol insurrection just a couple of weeks ago that police and elected leaders are not free from corruption. So this is really, you know, part of the bigger picture of needing campaign finance reform. But as in my work and with the work of our vast network of people who are trying to do the right thing, we urge the board to accept proposal A proposed by DAs. And I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Liddell. The next speaker will be Alana Matthews. Your microphone's available?
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Alana Matthews. I'm a 17-year member of the State Bar of California, a former deputy district attorney and the founder of the Community Justice Collaborative, an organization born in the wake of the African-American Spring of 2020 in response to tragedies that played out across the nation. Although the protests have subsided, it would be intellectually dishonest to say we have resolved these tensions. What we need to move forward is effective action to ensure more equitable practices in carrying out the important duties of elected district attorneys. It is apparent what the first step needs to be. And I encourage you that is supporting and approving the new rule and here's why. We recognize the symbiotic relationship between police officers and DAs, but the symbiosis is increasingly uncomfortable between the nation's police unions and the district attorneys who are elected to hold the union's membership accountable. In light of the whole high-profile deaths of George Floyd and so many other unarmed minority women and men at the hands of police officers, the low percentage of accountability raises more than an eyebrow. This is not merely a matter of silencing or suppressing voices, as a previous caller stated. For some, this is considered a matter of life and death. To further illustrate this point, another caller also mentioned the events of March 18th, 2018, when Stefan Clark was shot and the Sacramento Bee reported that only days later, after the shooting, two local police unions donated a combined $13,000 in campaign contributions to the local DA. The last thing I want to say is that AB 1506 does not automatically transfer responsibility to the attorney general. I just wanted to offer some clarity on that bill and that starting July 1st, 2023, the attorney general, what that bill does is it allows them to operate a police practices division within the department to review upon the request of a local law enforcement agency.
Excuse me, you have 10 seconds remaining. Thank you.
Thank you. That is, I just wanted to make clarity on AB 1506 and let you know that this bill is just simply an option, not a mandate, and I encourage you to approve this new rule. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker will be Mia Grindon. Ms. Grindon, your microphone's available? If you could do a mic check real quickly, please?
Hi, can you hear me?
I can. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I'll keep this brief. I am also calling to offer comment on the agenda item seven oh five. As a resident of Los Angeles and member of the public, it's really important to me that the board accepts proposal A, option one. I mean, my fellow callers have made all of the points that are relevant here. I just want to reiterate that it seems that there's no sensible reason to not institute regulations that ensure accountability in the dealings of special interests between our law enforcement and our district attorneys. And I just don't see, I, I only see it as a positive step forward ensuring that our institutions are protecting the public from unfair criminal misconduct by police. And this will be a step towards repairing fractured relations between the public and our law enforcement, which I think is in everyone's best interest. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next speaker will be Josh Simmons. Josh Simmons, your microphone's available? Can you do a mic check, please?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Go ahead.
Wonderful. Thank you all for your time. My name is Joshua Simmons. I'm a community organizer based in the North Bay area. I'm calling in to speak in support of proposal A for agenda item seven oh five. All the other callers have made excellent points, so I'll keep this really brief. This is exactly the kind of systemic policy change that we need to restore some faith to the justice system in the wake of a year that's shown us just how deep the cracks go. So please support that, please, please support that proposal and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments. The next speaker is listed only as Krista. Krista, your microphone is not yet available. We seem to be having some technical difficulty with Krista's mic and.
Hello, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I'm here in support of option one proposal A. I just wanted to, I'm from Oakland, California. Yes, my son, a nice mixed young man, and I'm terrified that if things don't change in the police way that policing is done, that he may be susceptible to harm. And that more than anything is terrifying, not just my son, any son that would fall under the same precedence. I'm also in support of one twelve. That sounds like a very nice option for people to have accessibility to the, to the legal assistance that they need when they come into situations such as that. So yeah, yes, for option one and yes, for one twelve. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker will be Shelby Stewart. Your microphone's available to Shelby. Ms. Stewart, you have, will you do a mic check, please?
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Good morning, trustees, and thank you for your time. My name is Shelby Stewart and I'm a lifelong Californian and resident of Oakland. I'm calling in today to offer comment on agenda item seven oh five and urge you to adopt the option. There is a conflict of interest when prosecutors investigate alleged criminal misconduct by police officers who are represented by the same police unions who bankroll said prosecutors' campaigns. The public has absolutely lost faith in the system's ability to hold police accountable by making it unethical for prosecutors to accept campaign contributions from law enforcement unions. The state bar can cure the conflict and promote prosecutorial independence. So I urge the board to accept proposal A proposed by DAs like Chesa Boudin, who I absolutely 100% support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments. The next speaker will be Kelly Young. Ms. Young, your microphone's available? Will you do a mic check, please?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning and thank you for your time. I'm also calling in regards to agenda items seven oh five in support of proposal A. I am a longtime resident of Los Angeles and as many people have said before me, I think Jackie Lacy serves as a prime example to highlight that conflict of interest does indeed occur. As the saying goes, don't bite the hand that feeds you. And Jackie seemed to operate with that front of mind because out of the 622 people who died at the hands of law enforcement during her tenure, she prosecuted exactly one of those cases. So I think those statistics speak for themselves as to why the public has lost faith in the system's ability to hold police accountable. And while we, Los Angeles residents, did come together and inevitably voted her out, a lot of damage was done before that became an option. So I think that it seems the correct step to address this issue would just be to take away the temptation completely. And by making it unethical for prosecutors to accept campaign contributions from law enforcement unions, you can cure that conflict. And for this reason, again, I urge you to please accept proposal A and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments. The next speaker will be Jean Way. Jean, your microphone has been, Ms. Way, Mr. Way, excuse me, your microphone's been made available to you. Can you test it, please?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you. So my name is Jean Wee. I'm a local activist and organizer here in San Diego. It's really heartbreaking to see how all the money in politics is still happening. So one of the caller called in absolutely correct about how we need to get rid of all of the corporation and lobby's money out of our politic. Because, you know, you remember AB 292, it was watered down. And one of the party was sitting at a negotiation table with the police union. So unfortunately, until we get this money out of the DA hand, out of politic, out of any law enforcement candidate, elected official, then they're going to continue to water down anything, any effort that we can, we try to do to hold police accountable. So I urge you to please support this proposal seven oh five. This is not, you don't need a public outrage to make things right. You can do the right thing, but unfortunately, if the DA refused to do the right thing and we kind of need the rules to make them to do the right thing. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next speaker will be Joseph Ineges. Mr. Ineges, you have a microphone available to check it, please?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm calling on behalf of District Attorney George Gasco and I'm the interim chief deputy over here at Los Angeles County DA's office. I'd like to just start off by saying that the lessons of the summer of 2020 show us that there is a toxic relationship in issues with trust among our communities that we serve and the appearance of a conflict. I think that the rule as presented, option one, is narrowly tailored to achieve the purpose that we're all at least seeking here in our new administration, which is to make sure that we continue to build trust, that there are no built-in conflicts. And what we're talking about here is at least $87 million of police union money that's been going toward district attorney races across the country. So I strongly support option one and as, you know, the largest prosecutor agency in the country, we certainly want to make sure that our constituents here at home know that there is no conflict and that we're serving the people as the independent gatekeepers of justice. So I strongly urge this body to support option one. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker will be De Vasquez. Your microphone's available? Can you do a mic check, please? Microphone is on mute, Mr. Vasquez, Ms. Vasquez. Microphone is still on mute. There we go. Can you do a mic check, please? De Vasquez, can you, can you do a mic check, please? I'm not hearing anything.
Maybe you can move on to the next speaker and give him a chance to.
We'll come back. We're going to move on. We'll, we'll come back. Uh, we're gonna move on to Maxwell Sabo. Your microphone is available. Can you do a mic check, please, Mr. Sabo?
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Uh, good morning, distinguished trustees. My name is Max Zabo. I'm a member of the bar and a former assistant district attorney. You know, I just, I think it's important to note that a number of the DAs that did weigh in to oppose this proposal, uh, this is Agenda, Agenda Item seven oh five, have all actually benefited from police union money and support. And I just think it's really important to note that as they stand here to oppose this proposal, they are simultaneously benefiting from the money and support of police unions. I also want to respond to this assertion that some have made, that we don't need this approach because there's public disco- disclosures, and these are elected officials, and they can be held accountable in another way. By the time that conflict is presented to the public, the, the conflict already exists, and it's too late. And I, I think to the extent that, you know, the bar, you know, wants to ensure the ethical practice of law, simply saying that, you know, there's other ways to address this down the line, that doesn't preclude or stop this conflict from occurring. So I think that it's really important that we separate those issues. And, and I also think it's illogical that the, the rules currently prohibit prosecutors from soliciting and benefiting financially and politically, uh, from support from an accused officer's advocate in court. This is what the rules currently require, but it enables prosecutors to benefit financially and politically from the accused advocate, accused advocate in public. You know, and it's only when prosecutors are not financially beholden to law enforcement unions that the public can be confident in the decisions that prosecutors are making about holding police officers accountable. You know, these pervasive financial ties, uh, between unions and prosecutors, between police unions and prosecutors will inevitably, you know, who will inevitably review the conduct of their, of their members is really deep into the chasm between law enforcement and the communities, you know, we're sworn to protect and serve, and-
You have ten seconds remaining. Thank you.
Sure. Um, you know, again, uh, there's no doubt that this is, uh, you know, a, a narrowly tailored approach and a compelling government interest. And, uh, you know, we appreciate, uh, your support of, uh, Agenda Item seven oh five for Option A.
Thank you. The next speaker is listed only as ACLU CAP. Uh, your microphone is available?
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning. My name is Mica Doctoroff. I'm a legislative attorney calling on behalf of the ACLU of California regarding Item seven oh five. The ACLU of California, as a civil rights and civil liberties organization, has long worked on reforming the criminal legal system and holding the various actors within it, including district attorneys and law enforcement agencies accountable. We are here today to express our support for the idea that district attorney candidates should not be allowed to directly solicit funds from any entities. California has one of the highest rates of police killings by law enforcement in the nation, with black people and other people of color being the disproportionate victims of police murder and violence. It is to shed light on the extent of police violence and misconduct and curb the use of force that we worked tirelessly with our partners to pass SB fourteen twenty-one, the Right to Know Act, and AB three ninety-two, the California Act, to save lives in the last two years. At the same time, district attorneys have systemically failed to hold law enforcement officers accountable for various crimes, including murder that they continue to commit on members of the community. We believe there is an inherent conflict of interest when local district attorneys try to hold law, local law enforcement accountable due to their close and interdependent working relationships. As has been widely documented, police associations have been significant contributors to district attorney candidates and many district attorneys and candidates for that seat solicit funds for their campaign elections. Therefore, we believe that district attorney candidates should not be allowed to directly solicit funds from any entity. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments. The next speaker is listed only as B. B, your microphone is available. Can you do a mic check, please?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, great. Um, I've been a prosecutor for forty years, and in my forty years, I have never seen a case where a police union political contribution to our elected DA caused any deputy district attorney to take an illegal or unethical position. So I'm quite appalled, actually, that our state bar is even considering this proposal instead of rejecting it out of hand as patently unconstitutional, both on its face and as applied. This proposal would have, uh, the state bar indoors and would have the practical effect of providing a direct political advantage to a DA candidate who, uh, police officers would not support because that candidate is not strong on public safety and would eliminate ability of police unions as opposed to any other group, help the campaigns of DA candidates who are more supportive of public safety. I would the state per single out one group, uh, and eliminate their constitutional rights as opposed to any other group or individual. Uh, so I think that, I know that that would be unconstitutional. I don't want to see a lawsuit come from this. Where's the proof also for the need for this proposal? There are plenty of checks and balances to prevent any problems from this perceived conflict of interest. Uh, because DAs are ethically required to not file or not prosecute or, or to file and prosecute if in fact there is proof beyond a reasonable doubt, uh, and if, uh, for the, uh, charges. And we can be centered by the state bar, including, uh, disbarred if we fail to do so. And within ten court days, a judge reviews the evidence and can dismiss the cases where there's no evidence to support the filing. In addition, you know, defendants entitled to a jury trial within six, sixty days, and there's a lot of other remedy-
Ten seconds remaining.
Uh, to them. So this is a, uh, non-issue. Uh, you can issue a statement, but do not eliminate the ability of constitutional rights of police unions to support the candidate of their choice. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker will be Benjamin Cohn. Mr. Cohn, your microphone is available?
Yes, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. You have two minutes.
Thank you. So I had commented on the same rule, four point ninety change proposal back in December to the Committee of Bar Examiners, which precipitated my larger written comments on the admission roles pertaining to testing accommodation. I was a little bit disappointed to see that regarding the specific issue on four point ninety, it still doesn't clarify that it's, uh, going to limit you to one appeal per cycle of the exam and not one appeal, uh, on, uh, that goes to the committee ever. Uh, that is still under the current draft language for your meeting as well. Uh, not specified in the new proposed draft. It is still clear in the discussion what the intent is, but not in the rule itself. And I'm still concerned that will cause problems down the line. Uh, I'm also still very feeling very strongly that the rules should be changed more holistically to reform the testing accommodation procedures and the written comments that I have, I think, should have some guideposts still on how that can be done, as well as how this particular rule, uh, change that's being proposed might be more clearly accomplished. So I would encourage you to look back into, uh, those when you circulate that particular, uh, roles change out. That's really all I called in about.
Thank you very much for your comments. The next speaker will be Carol, listed only as Carol. You have a microphone available to you. Can you please give us a mic check on that?
Hi, Mike, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Carol Heller, and my call is in regard to Agenda Item seven oh five. I'm not an attorney. I am simply a citizen, uh, who tries to keep infor- inform myself on what's happening and, um, trying to educate myself on what's going on. From what I'm seeing, first I want to say, uh, that I am calling, um, to accept, to urge you to accept Proposal A. And from my perception, uh, the muddy waters between police unions and prosecutors, um, appear to be at times, uh, untrustworthy. And, um, this last summer, I think these, the citizens, we've, we've shown that we, we need, we need, uh, faith in, in the system that has been set up, and I don't feel like the way to set up has given us, uh, that faith. So we are asking, um, to please advance the prosecutorial independence by making it unethical for prosecutors to accept campaign contributions from law enforcement use, unions, and accept Proposal A by the district attorneys. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. The next speaker is listed only as tenants' rights. Your microphone is available. Will you please do a mic check?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Thank you for the time. Um, the trust in prosecutors and police is at a historic low. There needs to be a concrete action by this committee entrusted with the task to uphold tenants of justice and its access to the most marginalized. As an immigrant who has received refuge in California, I speak out in support of Proposal A, Agenda Item seven oh five. It's about time we cure the conflict. Please show the rest of America and the world how this should be done. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is listed as Linda Back. Ms. Back, your microphone is available. Will you please, uh, give us a quick mic check? We're not hearing anything. Are you speaking? Ms. Back, let's move on to San Diego City College Mental Health. The microphone is available. Can you please give us a quick mic check?
Yes, hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Please go ahead.
Michelle McCurdy, sorry, I don't, I'm not speaking on behalf of San Diego City College, just me as a regular citizen here. I'm nobody fancy. But I just want to say, from where I sit, I, I'm just unbelievably, I'm gassed at how many lawyers and, you know, DAs out there somehow think that this is perfectly okay, that they are actively talking about how, you know, the freedom of speech and the rights of the police unions are, you know, they're, they're victims here. I, I just, I am appalled by this idea. Um, I find it insulting. Um, and, uh, please pass Proposal One. I would hope that it's obvious why the DA accepting money from police unions is in fact a conflict of interest. If we're actually gonna talk about research, let's not forget that there's ample research showing that money does indeed influence behavior. To, to ask that we just simply rely on the ethics of an individual DA is, uh, incomprehensible to me. You know, for, for the sake of literal lives, I implore this legalized corruption end. It's clearly unethical, immoral, and we deserve better. Let's set an example for the rest of the country, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker will be Jean Barish. Jean Barish, uh, your microphone is available. Will you please run a quick mic check? Your microphone is still muted. Would you please, uh, unmute?
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Please go ahead. You have two minutes.
Thank you very much. Good morning. My name is Jean Barish. I'm a retired attorney and longtime resident of San Francisco. I'm here to comment on Agenda Item seven oh five, addressing the issue of donations from police unions to prosecutors. Please approve Option One of this agenda item. Donations from police unions can result in an unacceptable conflict of interest when prosecutors investigate criminal con- misconduct by police officers who are also represented by the very same police unions who have helped finance those prosecutors' election campaigns. Any conflict of interest, even the appearance of a conflict, in turn erodes the public trust in our criminal justice system and should not be tolerated. Please support the Prosecutors Alliance of California, the ACLU, many California attorneys and other citizens by doing what's in the best interest of our criminal justice system. Approve Option One of Agenda Item seven oh five. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much for your comments. The next speaker is listed only with the phone number, area code two one three are the first three digits. Uh, your microphone is available. If you could unmute that, please, and please give us a quick mic check.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead. You have two minutes.
This is Michelle Hennessey. I'm president of the Association of Deputy District Attorneys. I was also a treasurer on one of the major IEs that supported Jackie Lacy. And what I want to point out is that the entire premise of these, this proposal to limit campaign contributions or make it unethical for prosecutors to accept them for police unions is based on a false premise because the campaign contribution limits did not permit Jackie Lacy, for example, to accept millions of dollars, and she did not get millions of dollars from police unions. That money was spent through independent expenditures and independent PACs, and it would be a violation of the constitutional right of the police unions to make any rule that violated, violated their ability to engage in political speech. So the proposal doesn't address the problem because it can't prevent the spending on IEs, and it would be a violation of the First Amendment right that would immediately be challenged in court, and, and you would lose because it is unconstitutional and violates Citizens United. So I'm opposed to the proposal because it is, does not accomplish what you want to accomplish. It is unconstitutional, and it separates out one particular group for one particular type of speech, leaving all others intact, for example, contributions for, uh, like by defense attorneys or by other political action groups. So I'm opposed for those reasons.
Thank you very much for your comments. The next, the next speaker will be De Vasquez. I think we might have had a mic issue with, uh, De Vasquez previously. Your microphone is available. Can you give a-
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Okay, good morning. Thank you, everyone. Um, I'm also calling to offer comment on Agenda Item seven oh five. I do believe that this creates a conflict of interest when prosecutors, you know, who are investigating misconduct by police are represented, you know, are accepting these contributions by the same police unions, by these said prosecutors' campaigns. So I do believe that throughout this past last year, there's been very apparent videos on social media that the entire world has been able to see where there's been just blatant misconduct, murdering of unarmed citizens, and these police officers were never held accountable. So I do believe that this would be a big step in creating that competent and trusting relationship between officials and the communities of whom they serve. So I urge the board to accept Proposal A. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Uh, the final two speakers will be, one listed as deleted account. So, um, we'll start with deleted account, and then after that, return to Linda Beck and see if we can get the mic to function there. Uh, deleted account, your microphone is available. You need to unmute it, and if you could do a quick mic check, please? Your microphone appears to be muted still, deleted account. And we're going-
If it helps at all, Mr. McClellan.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was gonna say, if it hel- if it helps at all, the caller may not realize that it says deleted account. They have a picture of a very lovely little puppy, um, if that triggers your knowledge-
Oh, I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing the puppy.
Okay, I'm seeing the puppy.
Okay, I'm only seeing, uh, the letter D. Um, somebody whose account is listed as deleted account with a puppy icon, we're gonna have to move on. We're gonna move on to Linda Back, who we had a microphone issue with a moment ago, and then we can try to come back to Mr., uh, uh, deleted account if the hand goes back up again. Uh, it looks like your microphone is available. Yes, please go ahead.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. My name's Linda Beck. I'm a deputy DA in Los Angeles County. I've been working as a DA in LA County for twenty-six years. My current assignment is in Compton, and my position is that it's critical now, more than ever, to rebuild trust in the community, um, in police and judicial system. And I think it's a very fair and simple way, uh, simple rule for prosecutors not to accept campaign contributions from police unions. It's, the whole point is to eliminate any appearance of conflict. Prosecutors work closely with police officers, and really, the majority of police officers are really great. They work hard to protect the community, and I am not going to villainize any police officers, but I do believe now is the time to eliminate any unnecessary appearance of, uh, uh, conflict or motives by financial contributions from, uh, police unions. And I think that at this point, the, uh, state bar can establish this by accepting Propis- uh, Proposal A or One in Agenda seven oh five, so that we can help our communities, uh, heal and eliminate this unnecessary question, uh, question, um, of, I guess, the integrity of our justice system. And that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your comments. We, we had one more person join the line, and since we weren't able to get to deleted account, and that hand hasn't been raised again, let's go one final comment, uh, from the public. Deleted account is back in, and hand is raised. So if we could make deleted accounts microphone available. And hand is up, microphone is-
Hello?
Yes, you can do it, but you're very hazy, you're very, um, a lot of-
Do you hear?
Yes, you might even need to speak, uh, take your-
Okay, hey, guys. Is everyone taking?
Go ahead.
Hello?
Yes.
Hey.
Miss, we, we are, you're coming in very, very hazy. Um, it's difficult to hear-
Hello, hello?
Yes, uh, please-
Oh, I'm, 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 did you hear me? I can't hear you guys.
Please, please go ahead.
Mic check, mic check.
You're, 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 we're coming through, hazy, but go ahead, please.
Hello, hello, hey, I, I- Hello, hello, hey, hey.
I, I, I'm sorry. I think we're gonna need, we, we don't have a connection. We're gonna need to, we're gonna, we need to move on. Mr. Chair, if that's okay with you?
That is, yeah, the audio seems to be malfunctioning. So if that's the last one.
We did, another hand came up after that. Would you like to?
Let me go ahead and take the, take the last hand, sure. Yeah, please.
Okay, let's go ahead. Listed is Leslie Osuna. Ms. Osuna, your mic's available. Mic check, please.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Hi, thank you for giving me the time. I just want to call and make a comment on Item 705A in support. I believe that the potential conflict of intrigue exacerbates a crisis of trust in law enforcement. It, a conflict of interest law applies to judges and law and attorneys, and it should apply to prosecutors naturally. The maximum that justice must satisfy, the appearance of justice, is central to the Supreme Court's due processing rules on judicial disqualifications. So it's hard to establish or hard to think that it could not apply to a DA. There's even cases, Capert, Caperton v. A.T., Macy Co., Coal Company, 2009. And that showed that the judge had a conflict of interest, and I think it just should apply to overall any public attorney or person in the judicial system. That person or citizen can be, there can be a consequence for that person. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, and that will conclude our public comments for today.
Thank you, Mr. McLeod, for facilitating that. Thank you, members of the board, for your attention. And, and truly thank you to all the members of the public who took the time to, to share your thoughts and your concerns with us this morning. I'm going to exercise the prerogative of the chair, given the amount of interest and the many people who appear to still be on the line with likely interest in this item, that to move Item 705 to consideration now before the rest of the agenda. I will take a quick scan and survey of the board to see if there's any issues with that. Mr. Tony, you want to say something?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mark.
Mr. Chair, I would like to recuse myself from the discussion and decision on Agenda Item 705 because I serve as a member of the Board of Directors of the ACLU Northern California. And I believe it's prudent for me to avoid any potential conflict of interest or appearance of conflict of interest. By recusing myself, I will sign off the call and simply ask that somebody contact me after the vote has been taken, and I will rejoin the board meeting then.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Tony. Your recusal will be noted for the record. We appreciate you letting us know the reasons, and we'll let you know when we're done with 705. Anyone else on the board have any issues with considering 705 now? I hope not, because Mark has left. Donna, I understand we have a staff report on this item from Mr. Tuft. If Andrew could be allowed into the meeting as a panelist, we'd like to hear his staff report, please.
And also Mr. Steve Bundy.
Oh, yes, correct. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you, Ruben. Just one moment for Stephen Bundy to connect, please.
I'm on.
Once he's all set. Okay, Steve, are you ready?
Yep.
Okay, great. So, good morning, everybody. My name is Andrew Tuft. I'm the supervising attorney in the State Bar's Office of Professional Competence. And in this role, I serve as the staff attorney to the Committee on Professional Responsibility and Conduct, which is often referred to as COPRAC. With me today is Stephen Bundy. He currently serves as the special advisor to the committee. Stephen has taught professional responsibility at the Law School of the University of California at Berkeley for nearly 30 years. And he also advises clients on legal ethics issues. I want to be clear that the memorandum attached to the agenda item reflects the work of the full committee, but Stephen was heavily involved throughout the process. And he's graciously made himself available to answer any questions you may have concerning the, the committee's approach or their analysis. This item originated on June the first, when four district attorneys wrote to the State Bar requesting that the State Bar adopt a rule of professional conduct that would preclude an elected prosecutor or a prosecutor pursuing election from seeking or accepting political or financial support from law enforcement unions. The request is made on the premise that law enforcement unions play a significant role in prosecutorial elections, both by making endorsements and donating funds. When prosecutors initiate an investigation or prosecution of a law enforcement officer, the union may sometimes pay for the officer's legal representation. The rule proponents argue that this creates a conflict of interest that should be addressed either by their proposed rule or in an ethics opinion prohibiting such political or financial support. On July 2nd, the State Bar sent a reply to the, to the district attorneys stating that the issue deserved focused attention and an in-depth analysis while also identifying several concerns with the proposal, which include both constitutional concerns under the First Amendment and equal protection issues along with potential conflicts with other state laws. The Chair and Vice Chair of the Board of Trustees referred the issue to COPRAC for a more in-depth analysis. COPRAC took the assignment and began working on it right away, and they first considered this issue at their July 24th meeting. In total, the committee met five times to consider the proposed rule, including a specially scheduled public hearing on August 11th, which was dedicated exclusively to receiving public comment on the proposal. I just want to note briefly that much of the public comment you heard this morning, the committee also heard both at that August 11th specially scheduled public hearing, as well as when they called for public comment on their regularly scheduled committee meetings. The committee's comprehensive analysis concluded in the form of a memorandum, which is provided as Attachment A to this agenda item. The committee's analysis includes a detailed discussion concerning how the California Rules of Professional Conduct and the statutes governing prosecutorial conflicts of interest and disqualification address the district attorney's concerns. The committee also observed that the legislature has taken the lead role in setting criminal justice policy in California. Following the consideration of their analysis, the committee identified four options for the board to consider. I'm going to briefly summarize each of the options in the order they are presented in the committee's memorandum. But as noted in this agenda item, staff is recommending that the board choose the third option, which is to monitor existing and proposed legislation as the impact of these changes could inform whether and how a rule of professional conduct or an ethics opinion might be pursued. So the first option presented by COPRAC for the board's consideration is that the board could determine to pursue a rule of professional conduct modeled after the district attorney's proposal or the ACLU's alternative. COPRAC's determination is that both of these proposals present significant constitutional concerns. Prohibitions or restrictions on political speech are subject to the strict scrutiny standard, which will require the State Bar to establish that the rule is narrowly tailored to achieve the compelling state interest. With respect to the district attorney's proposal, the rule would ban candidates and the candidates-controlled committees from accepting campaign contributions from a specified group, resulting in a restriction on that group's right to free speech via campaign contributions. The proposed rule presents a serious risk of being interpreted as a targeted repeal of the right of law enforcement unions to contribute to candidates for prosecutorial office. The committee has found the presentations in support of the proposed, proposed rule thus far have not established that the proposed rule would meet the strict scrutiny standard. Separate from the constitutional question, the proposed rule would have an effect on how campaigns are conducted and who may contribute to them. This presents a potential conflict with other state laws as campaign contributions are regulated under the Political Reform Act, which would raise a question for the board to consider whether this is within the purview of attorney regulation or the laws governing campaign contributions as set forth in statute. As noted in the committee's memorandum, campaign finance laws were recently amended and just taken effect on January 1st of this year, which established state law limits on political contributions to candidates running for local or county office, unless the locality has itself established such a limitation. The second option presented is that the board could direct COPRAC to draft an ethics opinion analyzing prosecutorial conflicts of interest under the existing rules of professional conduct, or direct the committee to amend one or more rules of professional conduct to address prosecutorial disqualification by adding language to a rules comment that, for example, includes a citation to the recently enacted Government Code, Section 12525.3. The purpose and function of State Bar ethics opinions are to provide advisory guidance to attorneys. However, they are not binding on the State Bar or the courts. And Rule of Professional Conduct 1.0C defines what the purpose of the comments are within the rules of professional conduct. And that provision states, "The comments are not a basis for imposing discipline, but are intended only to provide guidance for interpreting and practicing in compliance with the rules." As a result, both an ethics opinion and an amendment to a comment could provide guidance to prosecutors throughout the state on these issues. However, neither of these two approaches would accomplish the goal of the rule proponents of establishing a per se conflict of interest for prosecutors as a disciplinary standard. The third option is to direct staff to monitor existing and proposed legislation concerning this issue. As I just mentioned, statutory changes have recently been enacted concerning the law governing financial contributions to prosecutors seeking election. Also revisions to the Government Code were enacted on January 1st concerning the automatic recusal of a local prosecutor in certain use of force cases. In addition, an assembly member in October issued a press release stating that he plans on introducing legislation that would deal directly with this, with this subject. Staff believes that this option is the most prudent course to follow. One main reason is that it would avoid inconsistencies or conflicts between attorney standards set forth in statute and those set forth, set forth in the rules of professional conduct or in an ethics opinion. And depending on whether and how a statute is enacted addressing the subject would also inform how to approach an amendment to the rules of professional conduct or how to draft an, an ethics opinion and whether either option would be necessary. And finally, I just want to note personally, personal observation that although it's not addressed in the COPRAC memorandum, another important consideration of waiting to evaluate any statutory change before proceeding on this issue is that a statutory change would be necessary to address the important concern of jurisdiction of these cases. So for example, if a recusal standard was created in a rule of professional conduct or in an ethics opinion, neither of those authorities could dictate who would investigate the matter in the absence of the recused prosecutor's office. Now stated in the press release, the proposed legislation contemplates having the Attorney General investigate and prosecute law enforcement misconduct cases that require the local prosecutor's recusal. And as we heard some of this morning, this is the same approach taken under Government Code, Section 12525.3. And lastly, the fourth option is that the board could direct staff to create a task force to create prosecutorial standards. COPRAC identified that both the American Bar Association and the Northern District Attorneys Association have aspirational non-disciplinary standards that could provide supplemental guidance to prosecutors concerning their ethical conduct. Staff is not aware of any jurisdiction that has adopted these guidelines as disciplinary standards, although a few jurisdictions do refer to the ABA criminal justice standards for prosecution, for the prosecution function and Comment One to their Rule of Professional Conduct 3.8, which is the rule that addresses the special responsibilities of a prosecutor. However, as noted in the agenda item, California has in the past, as a policy matter, avoided statements of aspirational principles that are not adopted as binding regulatory standards. So I know we heard a lot of public comment this morning, and I know COPRAC's memorandum analyzing this issue is lengthy. And I just want to stop here to invite any questions members of the board may have for either Stephen or myself, or allow an opportunity for the board to discuss the options or however you wish to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Tuft. Thank you, Mr. Bundy, as well, for your work on this. I don't see any raised hands from any of the board members, but that doesn't mean that folks don't want to speak. So if you do have a question for staff, now is your chance. Donna, I, I believe that there are, so there were some references to the COPRAC memo. And I know that it's a part of the, the staff report that, that I reviewed. Could you point the board to what might be the most pertinent sections of that staff report and memo in case folks want to refer to it while we're having this discussion?
Certainly. So the, the, because the COPRAC memo was, was so thorough and well-written, frankly, the staff memo did not repeat it, did not seek to summarize it, but rather just focused on the four options and some of the pros and cons of those four options. The COPRAC memo just laid, pretty much laid out the four options following a lengthy discussion of the underlying issues. I know there was a lot of discussion on the, in the public comment about the, about the constitutional issues and whether the extent to which the proposal was or was not constitutional. And the COPRAC, COPRAC memo goes into great detail about the constitutional issues starting on page, I think it was 14 of the COPRAC, COPRAC memo, page 23 of the PDF that's posted online.
Thank you, Donna, for that.
If I can
Trustees?
jump in for a second. I, I think that, you know, you have in the staff memo, you have the options that we outlined. The actual core discussion of the proposals, the specific proposals from the, from the DA's Association and from the the ACLU is at pages 13 to, 13 to 18 of the, of the COPRAC memorandum. It's not short, but it, it, it does hit the key points, I think, in thinking about whether these proposals are basically, whether they're a good idea or not. And tries to canvas both the pros and the cons.
Thank you, Mr. Bundy. Trustees? I see trustee Shelby would like to speak. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning. This is directed to staff. Can you clarify, please, options? Option three, which I believe you all are endorsing. Option four and, excuse me, recommendation three, recommendation four, and recommendation five. If you could provide some clarity for me, that would be great. And then I have some comments to offer.
Sure. And are you speaking to the resolution language? So, and the reason why I ask about that is that there are more enumerated resolutions than there are options offered in the, in the agenda items. So I recognize that that might result in some confusion. But in the agenda item, there, there are four options.
I'm looking specifically, I'm looking specifically, I'm Andrew, and Andrew, I'm Melanie Shelby. It's a pleasure meeting you. I'm looking specifically at recommendations three, four, and five. Just trying to understand the variance between those, please.
Andrew, this is Sarah, the chair. I have a question for the chair, which is I have the five recommendations in the resolution. And if at any point you find it would be helpful for me to project them, I'm ready to do that.
Please do so. I'd appreciate that. Hi, Lainey, can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. I think it would just be helpful to clarify, though, that there are four options, and it looks like Resolution Five goes to only one of those options. Is that right?
I believe that, yes, I believe that's correct.
Okay, so it's a little confusing because it then makes it look like there's five options, but really there's four options, and Resolution Five goes to if you adopt.
That's correct.
One? Okay.
And I'm sorry, the, the reason for that is two proposed rules are, are offered, one by the district attorneys and then an alternative by the ACLU. So that, so Resolution Language One is if you wish to pursue the proposal as recommended by the district attorneys. Option two, if we could scroll down, is if you wanted to pursue the proposal recommended by the ACLU. Option three, and I think this gets to your question, Ms. Shelby, if, if that's correct. So another option that's in the COPRAC memo is to direct the committee to develop either an ethics opinion or amend a rule of professional condom, conduct through the comments by adding helpful cross-references to either Penal Code, Section 1420. helpful cross-references to either penal code, section fourteen, twenty-four, which deals with prosecutorial disqualification or recent amendments to criminal justice reform, such as government code, section twelve, five, twenty-five point three. Those would be two options that the committee could study. Resolution language four is to monitor proposed legislation because it appears the legislature is active in this area. And depending on the activity that the legislature has taken, the committee could study whether to propose a amended rule of professional conduct or an ethics opinion to analyze those recent statutory changes. And then option number five, I think, is to create a task force to develop a non-binding aspirational prosecutorial guide guidelines for prosecutors, which two other associations have developed similar guidelines. Does that answer your question, Michelle B?
It does, and I apologize if this is an elementary question. So those are the five pieces. If you can help me understand the four, because I didn't realize there was the variance between the two, and I apologize for that being my first meeting, trying to be prepared, but that would tie into kind of the direction of what my comments would be.
Okay, so four options offered by the committee. One is adopt a rule of professional conduct. There are there are two options that the committee received in terms of how a rule of professional conduct may look. And so those are resolution language one and two. The second option is to have the committee develop a either an ethics opinion or consider amending a rule of professional conduct by adding an explanatory comment addressing conflicts of interest and recusal standards and statutes for prosecutors. Option number three, which is resolution language four, and I apologize, it's confusing, is to monitor legislation and see what activity is taken by the legislature to help further determine what action to take in this area. And then option number five, or I'm sorry, resolution language number five, which is option number four from the committee, would be to create a task force to study and recommend non-binding aspirational standards for prosecutors.
If I can add, would it be helpful? It might be helpful, Ms. Shelby, to just be clear that there. So the reason there are five proposals is because there are really two rules of professional conduct on offer here. Right? Two different alternative versions. Right? The DA's version is essentially a restriction on DA's accepting campaign contributions from from law enforcement unions. So it operates both as a bar on their asking or accepting for such contributions. It also operates as a bar on law enforcement unions making such contributions. Right? And as spelled out in the memorandum, there are some real First Amendment concerns with that. The alternative rule is the ACLU proposal, which, in my judgment, represents an effort to pull the rule back. Right? In a way that raises less First Amendment concerns consistent with the ACLU's goal of, if you will, balancing equity concerns with First Amendment concerns. And so what the ACLU rule does is that it says essentially the everyone, everyone can accept contributions through their committee from anybody, but they can't personally ask for contributions from anybody. So it focuses on the personal ask, and that's an effort to bring the rule within the First Amendment or within the precedents that might bear on that. So that's why you really have five proposals is because the rule proposal splits into those two different approaches, the DA's approach and the ACLU's approach.
Thank you, Mr. Bundy. I see that trustee Broden has his hand raised, but I'd like to just ask a follow-up question to the point Mr. Bundy just made, and that is has that aspect, the ACLU proposal that you just described, is there any case law that would let us know one way or the other, whether that would pass constitutional muster?
Both of these proposals play off of a a single case in the Supreme Court called Williams Uli, which is a case about contributions to judicial campaigns. And both both try to bring themselves within that holding. I think that it was the committee's view that the ACLU proposal is closer to being within the holding of the Williams Uli case, but that there are still real questions about whether it would pass muster under the Williams Uli rule, that the questions are are much more serious for the DA's proposal.
Thank you for that. And then one last point of clarification, yeah, point of clarification, if I could, and this is to Mr. Tuft. The staff report reads to me that the staff recommendation is to is to wait for the legislature to act. Is that correct?
Yes, I mean ostensibly, yes. I mean, let's say the legislature does not act, I would still inform how to draft an ethics opinion because you would know what ethical, I'm sorry, what statutes and law the committee would be relying on. I want to make clear ethics opinion, the committee never sets policy or law or makes holdings. They always ground their analysis in other rule of professional conduct or statute. And part of the problem here is there are a lot of moving pieces, including statutes that were recently enacted and statutes that are under consideration. And so to answer your question, yes, but with a caveat that it would just really help inform however to proceed by waiting to see how these developments occur, how these considerations occur in the legislature first, because that would provide a solid authority for the committee to rely and hang its analysis on.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Broden, please.
Thank you, Chair. I will be supporting, I believe it's it's number four that we monitor the legislation. But I did want to make a few comments. I'll probably make some later on. Andrew, and the memo talks about the pending legislation, and at the time the memo was written, we didn't really know what was going on. So I'm kind of wondering if there's an update on that. The other thing I wanted to point out was that we're primarily focusing on one component of this, which is the contributions by law enforcement entities or agencies. But as you point out in in the memo, not you personally, but it's pointed out in the memo, this is a much broader question in terms of conflicts, either apparent or actual. I mean, you do point out, and we have talked about the fact that because of the close relationship between prosecuting agencies and law enforcement, that that in and of itself can create a conflict, either apparent or or actual. And you do point out in your memo on page four, it is difficult to determine how pervasive or serious these conflict problems are. My our own preliminary sense is that conflicts stemming from district attorneys' close working relationships with law enforcement may well interfere with the investigation of prosecution of some law enforcement misconduct. The enactment of AB fifteen oh six indicates that the legislature also recognizes that concern, at least in cases of potentially grave misconduct. So I think what you're stating there is that there is a conflict between law enforcement agencies and district attorneys, but we're not considering that now. And I guess what my question is, is whether or not the legislation, at least I will vote to monitor, is looking at this more broad question of conflicts between prosecutors and law enforcement.
Sure, Stephen, but let me just address Mark's first question about the status of the legislation. So in in the item, the press release, I believe, was issued on October twenty-second. It's fairly detailed about what they intend to pursue. However, and I checked, you know, right before last time yesterday, I've not seen any legislation introduced as as of today. But I haven't similarly, I haven't seen any follow-up statements as to the desire, any intention note to no longer pursue it. It's just that it hasn't been introduced today. And then Steve, if you want to talk about the
Yeah.
If you want to jump in somewhere there.
I think I think Mr. Broden's comment ties, raises a sort of broader issue that is part of what the Co-Prac committee wanted to have you folks be aware of. The this proposal does not address conflicts that are due to working relationships. Right? The the working that the close working relationship conflict, which is a real, I think, a real issue is not addressed here. And it's a tricky one to address. You could, you can talk about it sometimes under the conflict of interest rules, but there aren't really any opportunities for enforcement under the conflict of interest rules, which is a big part of the problem. Right? So the legislature has addressed this. Right? With what amounts to an automatic recusal statute. That's the new legislation last year, which pulls automatically, right? Every case involving the shooting of an unarmed civilian. Right? Pulls it to the state level. Right? So and there was, there were proposals to have that be broader. Right? The idea was that there were going to be a much broader range of cases where they would be pulled, and the legislature rejected that and left it only at the shooting of an unarmed civilian. That's not probably many of us would think adequate to address all of the relationship conflict problems. But the key point to see here is that the these proposals don't address those conflicts either. And the other legislation that is up up now actually would enact. Right? The same set of the same rule, basically, that the DA's are proposing that we adopt as a disciplinary rule. Right? And and so, but there are, for the legislature to act and 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 would be different than our doing so for two reasons. And one is that the legislature also runs elections. And so they have some expertise that the judicial branch does not. And the other, I think, is that the legislature also ultimately supervises and sets the standards for the enforcement of California criminal law. And so there's an argument for waiting, which says they're better positioned to address the issue.
Thank you, Mr. Bundy. Mark, are your questions answered?
Well, it's it's a broad question. It is a complicated issue. And I guess the point is we're only focusing on one small portion of that at this stage. So the answer is yes and no.
Okay. Trustee Chen had her hand up next.
Thank you. So I was actually going to ask a similar question. I do support option three, which shows up as resolution four for a number of reasons. And one of the things I wanted to ask for clarification on is, you know, option three is presented on page four of the agenda item does reference recently enacted changes to the law. And so I was going to ask for a summary of what those were, but it sounds like Mr. Bundy just provided those, so thank you. I think that's very helpful. I just think that we we have to acknowledge the outpouring of emotion that we heard in public comment and certainly throughout our country in reaction to the killings of George Floyd and everything we saw this summer. And what a serious issue our country faces with racial injustice in law enforcement. You know, I very much understand where that comes from. I empathize and sympathize with the issue very deeply. I however, do think that this is a matter that is being worked out in the legislature where it is more appropriate for our legislature to consider the administration of criminal justice. The issue that has been raised in option three, that without this legislative proposal, we, the state bar, will not have clarity as to who it is that would investigate the alleged misconduct or conflict. That presents a serious issue for me. The proposed legislation by Assembly Member Bonta has the attorney general investigating the alleged misconduct when requiring that prosecutors recuse themselves. And to me, that seems appropriate. It doesn't seem to be an issue that is appropriate for the state bar with its limited resources to be engaged in investigation of these issues, which would, you know, if we were to make it a state bar disciplinary matter. And because of the because of the First Amendment issues that are raised, and I very much take to heart that some of the public comments about the First Amendment issues, I also think it's dangerous to wade into this area where we would be, you know, prohibiting accepting financial contributions from one group, but not others. I mean, you can, you know, one thing that came to mind is some of you may have seen that Oregon recently passed a ballot initiative legalizing the, you know, decriminalizing the possession of any drugs. And that was a ballot measure funded in significant part by a group called the Drug Policy Alliance. You could imagine people saying, well, what, you know, prosecutors shouldn't take money from the Drug Policy Alliance or from other organizations decriminalizing the possession of drugs. So it becomes a very much a First Amendment issue where we're choosing one form of speech to prohibit and not others. And I think it's important that we continue to monitor this legislation. It looks like the issue is getting significant attention from the legislature. We run the risk of getting ahead of them and creating rules that potentially conflict with what they're deciding. And so for that reason, I support option three, which is resolution four.
Thank you, Hi-Lin. Trustee Saul?
Yes, I do want to sort of jump in here, but I sort of lost track of some chronology, and I'm just wondering, did trustee Shelby, did you get everything answered that you you needed to get answered? I want to jump in and start asking some of my questions until I know that you got everything taken care of that you need to get taken care of.
I did not, but that's fine. I'll jump back into queue. I appreciate that, though. Thank you.
Sure thing. And my my question is relatively short, which which is even pursuing the the staff recommendation around waiting for the legislature and see what happens from a from a statute and a bill sort of standpoint, given the fact that the the proposals do have this constitutional risk to them. I'm just wondering, even if whatever the legislature does, could there still potentially be some sort of constitutionality question that needs to be addressed?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I'm sure, I don't know the entire process that the legislature goes through. I'm sure that they would closely examine that question. I will note in the press release, the way the Assembly Member Bonta describes approaching this issue is as I read it, they would allow contributions to be made. And so district attorney, either elected or seeking election, could receive contributions from anyone. It's just if you received a contribution from a law enforcement union and investigation arose in your jurisdiction, the recusal process would take place, and that would go to the to the attorney general. So I don't have the constitutional analysis on on that caveat, but it is slightly different than the proposal that came to us in terms of a rule of professional conduct. But I'm not trying, I'm not trying not to answer your question. It's just it really would depend on what ultimately was enacted as as law. And I'm sure they have, they they would struggle. They would be very sensitive to those same to those issues as as we are. And I think everyone here knows one thing about a rule of professional conduct. When you seek to enact it under the Business and Professions Code through the state bar, there's a rule filing petition which goes to the Supreme Court, who would ultimately adopt it before it becomes operative as a discipline standard for attorneys. The burden is on the state bar to make sure all these questions, conflicts with other laws, constitutional issues are satisfactory to the court before they would adopt a proposed rule. Does that answer your, I know it's a lot of information and I, but there's, it's kind of a, it's a complicated answer, I think.
Thank you, Andrew. Arnie? Did that take care of it? Okay, good. I see that trustee Six Meadows has his hand raised.
Thank you. Thank you. First of all, I want to say that I'm very much in support of the comments. First of all, I want to say that I'm very much in support of the comments from the public speakers that joined us today. I'm very much in support of the effort of the district attorneys and appreciate the time they took, some of them took to join us also today. That was very, very appreciated, as well as the work of the ACLU. However, I do have some questions. As someone who's been stood for election numerous times, I'm very familiar with the processes whereby the organizations that monitor elections work, namely the California Fair Practices Committee, FPBC, as well as in our county, our local ethics commission. Our elections are highly regulated, reporting is frequent, contributions are scrutinized, and there is much, much care and consideration and effort to make sure that all of our elections are correct, clean, in accordance with all the rules and laws, and actions are taken if they're not. So, I'm very familiar with that, and I appreciate that if this were, solution were to, which I think, I again restate that I support, were to go forward, it might most effectively be implemented by the legislature, which I assume then would give instructions to bodies like the FPBC, if not local jurisdictions, that they could implement as part of their ongoing campaign election scrutiny. I don't know if we know the answer to this, but I'm curious if, if we were to do this as the state bar, I'm curious as to how the state bar would implement this type of regulation. Do we know yet, or is that something we'd have to figure out?
Mr. Tuck?
Well, my understanding is, it's, again, the request is a rule of professional conduct, which is minimum standard for discipline. And if it says a, just hypothetically, prosecutor, prosecutor seeking elections shall not seek or accept financial contributions from a law enforcement union. If a complaining witness submitted evidence to chief trial counsel that such a contribution was either sought or accepted, I, I would assume the discipline system would take hold of that, investigate, and then there's a whole another round of questions of what would be the appropriate level of discipline for engaging in that conduct. I don't think anyone is envisioning the state bar to regulate or oversee the election process. That's not my understanding, but it, it would be a form of, of discipline for prosecutors.
So, if it, if the state bar were not to oversee the election process, or more specifically, ask or review all campaign contributions, it would wait for someone to lodge a complaint, make it, bring it to the attention of the state bar, which a person may or may not, which may or may not happen each time it happens. And then, the process, I assume, is not instantaneous. It takes time to review those submissions. So, depending upon when the, the item came in, it could take even beyond the result, the election itself for things to happen. Okay? I appreciate that, and, and in contrast, I wonder if maybe the best solution for the problem we're all trying to solve would be having it done by the mechanisms that already exist to manage campaigns and campaign contributions, as opposed to trying to create another one. Thank you.
Thank you, Jose. Trustee Pertula?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, it's very clear that we're dealing with a compelling issue. I'm struggling a little bit around the First Amendment and equal protection portions of either, of the two options. I, I feel like it may be a slippery slope to use rules of professional conduct to regulate political speech. So, I guess my first question is, are there other examples where political speech has been regulated by rules of professional conduct? Has that, has that occurred?
Mr. Tuck?
Not, not political speech, Mr. Pertula. There is a rule about trial publicity, and that's rule of professional conduct 3.6, and that addresses a lawyer who's involved in an investigation or litigation of a matter shall not make extrajudicial statements, and that's, the policy behind that is not to prejudice potential jury members and things like that, and, and members of, of the public. That's, and then, of course, there's advertising, but these aren't political speech, speech regulations, but those, I think, are the two that come to my mind that deal with rules of professional conduct addressing attorney's speech. And then, sorry, and there's compelled, compelled speech where you got to tell someone if you don't have malpractice insurance, things like that. I'm sorry, I don't mean to laugh, I just, I'm an ethics person, so when these things come up, I can talk to you for hours about this stuff. But those are the type of areas that I think would most be closely attenuated to attorney speech.
And, and how, how would we draw a distinction between a elected district attorney, for instance, and an elected city attorney who prosecutes misdemeanors and sometimes felonies if given that power by the district attorney? Or, for instance, a city attorney who was elected, who is, has civil matters? I'm, I'm having a hard time, I take it one level further, and you have a, you know, city council member or a member of the legislature who's an attorney, who would be receiving money from an association, maybe it's the police, or maybe it's a different association. I just, I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with how this regulation would deal with scrutiny under equal protection.
I think it would be, it would be dependent on how the rule is, is drafted, but right now, it just says prosecutor, and, you know, you could add a clarifying comment as to who is intended to be a prosecutor for purposes of the rule. You raise a good point. Some prosecutors are city attorneys, and, you know, I think we would have to look at, if, if, if the rule were to be pursued, whoever was tasked with drafting it would have to look at that, that closely. I mean, right now, just as all prosecutors seeking election or elected prosecutor, that's broad enough in my mind to attach to both the individuals you're, you're referring to. City attorney and district attorney.
And, and the distinction, I'm just trying to understand, and the distinction between, if you were to do that, between the criminal and civil is one that you think would stand up in law? I mean, you obviously have folks that are making decisions, elected officials who are, who are attorneys by education, who are licensees of the bar, making policy or legislative decisions, and they, why would we treat them differently, assuming they would be receiving funds from an association?
So, I, if I'm understanding your question correctly, I, I think the equal protection issue is a real one, and it's identified in the COPRAC memorandum. If I'm understanding your question as specific to the distinction between city prosecutors and district attorneys, I don't know, but maybe the rule proponents might argue district attorneys are the ones who bring wrongful action cases against district attorneys, and therefore, maybe their proposal might be seen to exclude city attorneys, but I'm just speculating on that.
Lastly, it would seem to me, I appreciated your option number three or resolution four, but, but I would ask if there was a reason why maybe we weren't taking a little more active role in that? I mean, I think we are in a position where we could advocate and make it part of our legislative proposals, and offer some assistance and guidance to the legislature as opposed to just monitoring. And, and I take it one step further, I think trustee Cisneros talked about it. I mean, campaign finance reform obviously is, is important, and the legislature is taking that up, but it also goes down to the local counties and municipalities and their ethics commissions and the decisions that, that they're making.
So, Andrew, I'll take that, the first part of that, anyway. So, so the state bar often provides technical assistance to legislation as it's moving through, whether or not it's part of our legislative priorities. In this instance, we did engage in a conversation, I believe, or at least an email exchange with the, with the, with the office of the member who put out the press release indicating at the time that he was interested in pursuing that, this type of legislation. We reached back out and, you know, have offered to assist on, you know, legislation that, that, you know, to provide them technical assistance, to share with them the COPRAC memo, to, you know, certainly help draft something that's consistent with what they are trying to achieve. And so, I don't know that it needs to be part of our legislative priorities, because I, I do think that, that the question is, you know, what, what would be that legislative priority, to the extent that, that the board believes that there are constitutional issues with the proposal, and therefore, you know, thinks, thinks that the, that that's among the reasons that it wouldn't be appropriate for the party to consider it as a rule, would we be saying irrespective of those same constitutional issues, we think the bar should draft legislation that would accomplish that, that feat?
I, I'll just make a quick comment, and I'll be done. The legislature, obviously, I believe, is the right venue for this conversation, but Ms. Hershkowitz, they have, obviously, much broader power than we do. And so, I, I, I believe that you would, with that broader power, have more ability to pass a law that would live through constitutional muster. And so, I think if asked, we should think about supporting it. I do understand the compelling issue that's involved in ways that we can be as supportive. I do not believe a, a professional rule is the right way. Thanks.
Thank you, Josh. Before I recognize the next, the next trustee, for full disclosure, I will note for the record that although I am a city attorney and thereby a city prosecutor, I'm not an elected, I'm an appointed city attorney, so these issues do not personally affect me in a way that would require me to feel like I need to recuse myself from this chairmanship here. Trustee Shelby, your hand is up next.
Thank you. What a wonderful way to start my inaugural time on the Board of Trustees. You know, I, I come to this issue, interestingly, as a non-attorney, but a person who has lobbied and has a public affairs firm, so I'm very familiar with campaign finance laws, and on occasion get the opportunity to complete the major gifts campaign filing forms. So, when, when this was brought to the purview, I had no idea the level of engagement that we would have in relation to public comment, and so appreciative of that process. By my account, I think I heard approximately 31 people in support for option one and approximately six people that opposed, but I, I would love to know if those numbers actually work. And someone in public comment made the, the comment that 2020, the world was here and watching, and I would actually surmise that we were at home because the pandemic shut us down here in California, but actually, if you have been engaged in social justice and civil rights, we've been watching for quite some time. It's just that the unfortunate killing of George Floyd, we were all in the same place at the, at the same time watching. That being said, as I am understanding all of the jurisdictional issues, Federal Political Practices Commission, local jurisdictions, and many of the jurisdictions that we do work in, just for example, you've got different municipalities, those who, and trustee Cisneros touched on this, those who have public ethics commissions, those who put into, to place, if you have a contractual relationship or are pursuing one, you have 180 days that you cannot offer any sort of a campaign contribution. Those rules vary from the different jurisdictions. And so, one of the things that I began to think about were, what are some of the other jurisdictional impacts of the proposal? Also, just the feeling that time, as I looked at the timeline, beginning June the first, it feels like a, a significant amount of work has been done within that very brief lapse of time. And so, for myself, as I began to understand the intersection of the options and the recommendations, and I appreciate the clarification on that, time for me, as it relates to a more comprehensive understanding of the issue, really clarification as it relates to kind of jurisdictional impacts, and what other organizations would have some sort of, particularly from a policy standpoint, I know we're talking about a, a professional rule, and if I utilize the wrong language because I haven't embraced it yet, being here for only five weeks, please forgive me, but bring that to my attention. And so, and not really being clear as it relates to what monitor legislation means, and I would love clarification on that. Does monitor mean that at the end of that, it's just a matter of reporting out? When you all talk about monitoring legislation, is there some sort of action that is attached to that, or is it just as clear as the language states?
So, I, I can-
Yeah, go ahead, Donna. Thank you.
So, I think the, certainly the point would be, and, and to, to be crystal clear, we know that Assemblymember Bonta issued a press release back in October indicating the desire to, to address this issue and to do it, do it through legislation. And the legislation has not been, yet been introduced, and we obviously can't speak for anybody else on whether legislation would be introduced. So, as, but assuming it is, the idea would be that we would, one, provide that technical assistance that Josh was talking about, but also, upon enactment, that would be an opportunity to really take a look and say, okay, now that the statute has been enacted and there is statutory guidance, would it now make sense to adopt a complementary rule of professional conduct, or to amend an existing rule of professional conduct to, to add something in the comments to that, to that, based on what was just adopted in, in the statute? Would it now make sense possibly to issue an ethics opinion? And we had a similar situation come up, we were actually directed statutorily, or in uncodified statutory language, a previous, a piece of legislation was enacted, and the legislature said, okay, now that this has been enacted, state bar, take a look and see if you think an ethics opinion would make sense. And so, that's really the model that we would, we would follow, where we would, we would take, take a thorough analysis of the, of any statute that was enacted, and make a determination of whether a complementary ethics opinion or a complementary rule of court would be to the benefit of California lawyers, and to provide some further direction and clarity in the area.
That is helpful. And then, as it relates to if we were to engage in technical assistance, if asked, how would you, how would the state bar assemble? Would it be the COPRAC group that would do that, the committee that would do that, or would, would it be a specific task force that would be put together? How would that be addressed?
So, largely, technical assistance tends to be provided by staff, reviewing language, helping draft language to meet a legislator's particular purpose. Right? It isn't, it, it wouldn't be the bar coming up with the policy, but rather providing the language, the statutory, proposed statutory language to meet the author's particular goal.
No, I understand what technical assistance is. I appreciate that clarification, though. But as it relates to an issue as sensitive as this, would it be a situation where there would be a public commenting opportunity for people to share their thoughts on that language that we were providing as it related to technical assistance, or would it just be merely staff-driven? I, I should have asked that question better.
Yeah, I, I, I certainly apologize. The, I, I continue to envision that it would be staff-driven. The public comment process, if you will, would happen through the legislative process. If the, if the, if the legislator were to agree with the language that we were proposing to help them achieve their goal, and decide to move that forward, then through the legislative process, that's where the public would be weighing in on whether or not that language was effective, and, and right, and also weighing in on whether or not the policy that the particular legislator was trying to achieve was the right policy.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. I, I will note something that I've been meaning to say, and the, the exchange between trustee Shelby and Ms. Hershkowitz just reminded me that COPRAC did put quite a bit of time and attention to this matter, some very detailed, and I think, good legal work and analysis. And so, I, I want to express my thanks as a, as a trustee for all of that, for all of those hours of, of serious consideration and work. So, thank you. If you could pass that along whomever next talks at COPRAC, I would appreciate that. Trustee De La Cruz has his, thank you, has his hand up.
Thank you, Chair. First, I want to thank the public comment today. I think it was, I, I see the passion from all speakers, and I know there's a lot of interest in making sure different levels of government, and there's, and, and, and as people that, that serve in public and, and create the opportunities for, for- create the opportunities for, for, for our constituents, we, we do what's right. And, and the passion from all the speakers, I think, is, is telling. You know, 2020 has been a difficult year in terms of systematic issues with policing, with education, with all levels of government. And, and, and I think, you know, um, there's a time, uh, when we have to be bold and we have to move forward. And, you know, understanding that there will be legal repercussions, um, sometimes we have to be bold and take that first step. You know, um, a- as I hear speakers and I hear my colleagues speak here, um, on the issue, uh, I, I do see that this is a, 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 option one is a step in the right direction. But it doesn't impede other opportunities for a police union to invest in a prosecutor's race, right? Through independent expenditures or through phone banking or through precinct walking. Uh, that could be done, done independently. Um, and even police officers can directly, uh, contribute to, to a prosecutor's, um, a race. Um, I have a family within, uh, um, that are, uh, law, in law enforcement. I often see, um, sometimes, um, the arrogance in some of them and sometimes the, uh, the hum- humility of being a police officer and defending, um, the communities that they serve. But I also think that there is a problem within how a prosecutor and a police union, uh, work together. And sometimes they, they don't do what's right for the community. They don't do what's right for, for the people that we, they swore north to, uh, an oath to protect. Um, I've worked in different campaigns. Um, I've seen how involved some of the police officers, uh, associations or unions get involved. Um, and I, I also see how that affects policymakers and their decision-making. And I also see it in, in, you know, prosecutors, how they, they, they make their decisions. Um, so although I, I, I agree that monitoring legislation is, is, is a, a good step. I don't think it's enough. I think Sean men- uh, Josh mentioned earlier that I think we need to do more than just monitor legislation. I think we need to be bold as a state bar and, and make a statement that we're also interested in making sure that, that as a body, a governing body here, um, that is, it, that believes that we are here for the public interest, uh, we continue to do that. And so, uh, for me, um, I think option one, um, sets the tone for the state bar, that this is something that we want to pursue, um, and continue to pursue and work with the legislators. I, um, you know, I, I'll, uh, I'll defer to our staff here and our team here on how that would work and, and guide us in that, that, that process. But I, I think it's, it's a, it's, you know, when people continue to talk about the state bar, uh, the state bar is the same state bar. They just changed the seats and different, uh, people. But it, 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 it works as the same governing body. I think, you know, we've done a lot and I, I've, I've repeated myself before and, and different issues. Um, we've done a great job of moving the state bar forward, and I think we need to continue that. I, I think we need to continue to be bold and look at opportunities where, you know, other, uh, other, other agencies like ours across the country haven't done so. Um, I always feel like the, the state of California and governing bodies within the state of California lead the country, and I think we should do that, uh, as a governing body here. I mind, I'm, I'm probably in the minority of the decision in, in terms of what option I, I prefer. Uh, but I, I felt like, uh, you know, I needed to state my comments and my suggestions and also, you know, how I feel about how we, uh, how we look and how we proceed as a, as a governing body here at, at, as a state bar. So thank you.
Thank you, Juan. I see trustee Broden has raised his hand once more.
Sorry, I won't belabor this, but Melanie reminded me of something and I thought I might want to comment. My very, very first, um, meeting back, I think it was in 2016, Sean was there and I know Brandon was there. The very, very first vote we had was on, um, a rule of professional conduct dealing with a prosecutor's duty to disclose discovery. Um, that had been on the books since 1963 with Brady versus Maryland. And yet there was still a problem, at least from our perspective and no, uh, disrespect to anybody else or any prosecutor. There was still a problem with prosecutors disclosing exculpatory discovery. Um, and the very, very first vote, which, um, at that time, we were still in San Diego. We had the big convention. We hadn't separated the bar out yet. The bar was, I think, 23 members, if I remember correctly, the Board of Trustees. And I walked in not knowing anybody and here was this, this significant vote on this particular, um, rule of professional conduct. You had comment from major criminal defense attorneys, uh, attorney general, prosecutors, everybody else in the world. And we voted on it and we passed that, um, rule of professional conduct, which I think is 3.8 now, which makes it, um, a reportable offense for a prosecutor to withhold that type of information. And I say that, um, number one, because sometimes our first meetings have some significant issues. And the other thing is, it's sort of a comment to Josh's, Josh's point is that, um, there was a statute on the books sort of dealing with that issue. It said prosecutors need to disclose information, but we had a problem. And so, uh, we did pass a rule of professional conduct that we can now enforce. I personally think after listening to the discussion and thinking about it more, that this is much more of a legislative issue than one for us in terms, the only thing that we can do is pass, uh, or at some point, I guess, pass a rule of professional conduct. Thou shalt not, or thou shall. And the, uh, remedy for that is some form of discipline through the state bar. So I really think that this is a legislative issue. To me, it's much broader than, uh, as I mentioned, than simply contributions. Um, and so I, I certainly will again, support option three or four, whichever one that is.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, trustee Dylan.
I now found my mute button. Uh, thank you. And I will, sorry about that earlier. Um, I, I do agree with, I, I seem to agree with trustee, uh, Mark Broden because I, I've not, uh, I'm, I'm very cognizant of the First Amendment, but as, as well as really making sure that the, the people, the citizens are protected in terms of getting, uh, you know, access, uh, to, to justice and also, you know, having justice served. So, um, I heard, um, Haley and, and Josh, but I would agree with also with Mark, I'm making this, h- having the, um, this be, um, legislative act and, and for us to be able to, um, do disciplinary as well as, um, monitoring in a sense of getting, you know, making sure that we're able to, um, pursue anything that, that, that will help in, uh, serving justice to the people. And that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Sonia. It is 11:21, ladies and gentlemen. We've been going well over two hours, um, on this very important topic. I am going to suggest that, um, the secretary put on the screen. And I know it's probably hard to get all of those options up there, um, for us to look at, but maybe to start, uh, if we could look at resolution four, Mr. Tough, is that correct? That seems to have, um, gotten, uh, the most commentary. I'm not suggesting one way or the other, obviously what the board should do. But while that is up on the screen, could we take an eight-minute bathroom and get up and stretch your legs break? Um, and then come back and figure out whether there is a motion ready to lay on the table? Any objection to that approach? Seeing none, I'm going to turn off my video and take care of business. Uh, we will reconvene at 11:30. Dag, you want to say something?
I was just going to ask staff to leave the resolution up rather than leave, rather than adding the slide that says we're in, we're in, on a break. I think it's good for people to be able to have that available to them in public.
Exactly, exactly. Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, folks, we'll see you in, uh, now seven minutes.
Madam Secretary, if you will confirm for me the quorum, which looks pretty easy. It looks like we're good to go. We'll wait for, uh, trustee Shelby.
Yeah, I believe you have everybody except for her.
Does anybody want to, um, switch up the slide there and see any of the, any of the other resolutions? Okay, trustee Shelby has rejoined. Uh, we are back, uh, reconvened at 11:30. Thank you, everyone, for the break. What is the pleasure of the board? Is there a motion? Don't all talk at once.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
There doesn't seem to be a timeframe, i- if any, as to whether, as to when, um, they would report back to the board. Are we just leaving this open like this or, or, or should we add that?
That's in, in reference to, uh, resolution four on the monitoring and report back?
Yes.
Mr. Tough, do you, do you have any details on that?
So I, I would just note that this option, uh, is to monitor only the current legislative session. And that it does not prejudice the development of a rule or an ethics opinion, um, following the closing of, this legislative session. So, um, it directs the committee to then consider, um, or determine whether an ethics opinion or revisions to the rules of professional conduct would be appropriate following any action, um, taken in, in this legislative session. I don't know, um,
Then what? I mean, what do you do with that?
So if, if there's action, of course, the rules of professional conduct comes, uh, to the full board and an ethics opinion would come to rad if, uh, no changes are, are adopted. Um, we could report that. Um, I'm not sure what would be the pleasure of the board in, in that example.
Colleagues, anyone have a preference? Well, first of all, don't answer that question. Um, I think if there's a motion to get to, um, for the board to adopt resolution number four, then that would, I would request that that be a part of the motion. In other words, if there is a time, um, that the board wants to set for that reporting, uh, I would ask that it be made a part of that motion.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Oh, sorry. I, I think that's a, that proposal is a good idea and we could perhaps at the close of the, set a time for, after the close of the current legislative session to have a reporting back and perhaps there, the board may, you know, given the attention that's been given to this issue and how important it is, perhaps the board may want to give some more direction to COPRAC as well.
Josh, did you want to say something?
Um, Mr. Chair, what's the appropriate way? I have, um, uh, two amendments, uh, to this, um, current motion or, I'm sorry, to the current resolutions before I'd be willing to make a motion. I'm happy to make a friendly amendment. Um, if someone wanted to move this or we can, um, I can address them now if that's more appropriate.
Well, there's, there's no motion on the, on the table. So certainly you could take what staff has recommended as a resolution and, and alter it the way you want to put it on the table. See if it gets a second for discussion.
Um, the, 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 the two, um, additions that I'm interested in making to the, uh, resolution, the first one, um, as I've stated in my earlier comments, um, on the first resolved, I, I believe we need to show a little more, um, activity and action, uh, and desire to be part of the solution. Uh, so, uh, I would suggest where it says that the Board of Trustees direct staff to monitor legislation. Um, I would like to, um, insert there, um, uh, and to reach out to the legislature to offer assistance.
As appropriate?
Yeah, as appropriate, uh, or once introduced um, would be, would be the first one. And the second one in this, in the second resolution, um, or resolved, I'm sorry. Uh, there is, um, I, I don't think it's broad enough. Um, and I actually sent some language over to Dag. More specifically, I think that, um, we should look at making a change. Let me see where it was. Hold on one second. Oh, no, it's actually in the first, it's still in the first resolution. If I would, um, replace, uh, recusal of prosecutors who receive with concerning the restrictions on campaign contributions or limitations on prosecutorial offices based on campaign contributions.
I'm, I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Yes. Um, where are you in it? Campaign contributions or limitations on prosecutorial offices based on? I think the, the way it was written, I was concerned that what we were doing was giving very limited, uh, potential for the legislature to deal with this issue. I think they may deal with it in a broader, um, context. And so I, I attempted to, uh, broaden it and have us be a little more active. That was my goal. I, I would, um, open it up to other trustees, uh, who think that there's better language.
Josh, if you don't mind, I will, uh, restate it, um, as your motion. Um, so that folks who are listening on the phone and perhaps don't have access to the, uh, the screen that we're looking at know what we're talking about. So the motion on the floor from Josh is resolve that the Board of Trustees direct staff to monitor legislation and to reach out to the legislature to offer assistance once introduced in the first year of the 2021, 22 legislative slash session concerning the restrictions. So, uh, Madam Secretary, if you could help me out there, thank you.
Thank you.
Concerning the restrictions on campaign contributions or limitations on prosecutorial offices based on campaign contributions. And it is further resolved that the following, that following the consideration of, of the legislature's activity on this issue during the 21, 22 legislative session, the Committee on Professional Responsibility and Conduct is assigned to determine whether revisions to the rules of professional conduct or the development of an ethics opinion would be appropriate. Is that how you want it, Josh?
Um, I, I, I think that gets the point across. I, I will say, I just, I, I would be remiss not to make this statement. Um, in, uh, in quickly changing language on our resolutions, I miss Sean. He would be very helpful right here.
Can we say campaign contributions to elected prosecutors or just, because otherwise it reads as it's campaign contributions generally? So
I'm, I'm fine, I'm fine with that. Thank you for the clarification.
I see the general counsel would like to offer something.
Josh, in, in, uh, pivoting from just monitoring it to a more proactive approach, do you still want to retain the once introduced? Because the bar could be, uh, assist in the formation and the drafting of the, um, language of a bill?
Yeah, I might, conceptually for me, I mean, I see no reason why, um, we shouldn't be involved. It's an expertise of ours at an earlier stage.
So you would take out, um, once introduced, yes?
Just look at it again, please. Yes. Thank you, Vanessa.
You're welcome.
But Josh, some of, uh, what was presented was, uh, that this would apply to those who are running also for, uh, prosecutors. This one seems to limit it to only elected prosecutors. And the other thing is I think it does define exactly what you're looking at, but it doesn't get into those other issues that, that I talked about, the, the other conflict types of issues that the, that the legislation may get into. So this is very focused.
So while Josh is considering that, sorry, Josh, I, I am going to ask, uh, that trustees continue to use the raise hand function because I feel like that went very well um, in our previous discussion. So, uh, I see trustee Stallings has his hand raised. I will let, um, I will ask Josh to respond to Mark's, uh, last comment first.
Um, that was not my response. Uh, Ruben, uh, Mr. Chair, if you can, uh, take another question, please, and just give me one moment before I respond.
Of course. Mr. Stallings.
Sorry, my dogs are attacking the mailman.
Okay, trustee Chen.
So to get at Mark's comment, how about candidates for elected, you know, something just so that it's not the actual, limited to only those prosecutors who end up getting elected, but campaign contributions to candidates for an elected prosecutorial office or whatever we want to say.
I see the secretary has started. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. That, that is the goal here was to be broader. And I, and I think that all of these suggestions are doing that.
Okay. Let's read it again and then if there's a second, please, someone offer it. Resolve that the board of trustees direct staff to monitor legislation and to reach out to the legislature to offer assistance in the first year of the 2021-22 legislative session concerning the restrictions on campaign contributions to candidates for elected prosecutorial office or limitations on prosecutorial, prosecutorial offices based on campaign contributions. And then the rest remains the same. That's the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, trustee Shelby. Motion's on the floor. Trustee Stallings, would you like to comment?
Yeah, I guess I have a question to general counsel. So now that of this language of to reach out to the legislator to offer assistance, kind of an assistance is somewhat of an ambiguous term. I mean, is this in support of legislation and opposition to offer research? And my question relates to that ambiguity and also if there's any implication of offering assistance and the Keller decision and any other cases relating to the legislative activities of the bar.
The answer to this second question, the Keller one, is no. But I think the answer to the first one is within the purview of the board. And I would ask Josh, you know, what kind of assistance? I'm guessing. And if you want, you could qualify the language to say to offer assistance, you know, within the expertise and purview of the state bar, something like that, or on ethics issues or something, you know, what, what are we looking to do? And then we could put it into language.
Or we could technical assistance, which is, as we were talking with trustee Shelby earlier, is a sort of understood way that an organization might provide input to legislators.
So I guess would that get into then the area of an advisory opinion? Would we construed as that and could it be used by a legislator seeking to introduce that legislation as support, whether pass it or, or not of whatever person they're trying to advocate for?
I mean, it's very customary for public entities to monitor legislation and often they have formal protocols in the executive branch, for example, where they actually do a bill analysis and, and they, or even before they could be contacted because they have the expertise. It's, you know, it's, it's their missions that are being affected and they could talk to them or they fill out formal bill analyses and, you know, propose changes or revisions to something or actually the content of something. So clearly what we have to offer is the ethics analysis. It's just a matter of putting into words what you want. And so you could also say, leave it to the legislature to decide what they want for what areas they want us to address or we could be more assertive and say that we want to monitor and submit our views on this.
So Josh, would it be a friendly amendment then to say, and to reach out to the legislator to offer assistance in the form of the attached memorandum from co-prac? I mean, that's, that's really the the work product that we have from co-prac that's guiding our decision today. And I think it does raise the appropriate issues if legislator should be walking down that road.
Brandon, let me just mention, I'm not sure that we want to restrict it to that because one of the things that has to be done is a more fulsome exploration of the constitutional issues. And for example, Office of General Counsel has been involved in that and we may, we may want to expand that particularly with regard to the ACLU letter. I think some, some general, but that language that, but that recognizes what the state bar brings to the table would be the right thing to do. I think you correctly identified that it's maybe too vague.
So I heard, I heard Donna suggest the word technical before assistance. Josh, does that? Would you accept that as a part of your amendment? I mean, as part of your motion?
There, there are two things that I'm hoping to accomplish here. Number one is monitor legislation to me is that somebody is looking at what happens on the docket at the legislature and comes back to us and says, guess what? This happened. And that to me is unacceptable. So if that were to happen, I believe we are in a position on an issue that maybe doesn't fall directly on us, but one where we should pick up the phone and call them and say, we understand you're, you're looking at this, you're offering this, you're interested in this. How can, what guidance, what technical assistance, what knowledge do we have that we can help guide this? It may come back to us and we may end up supporting it or not. But I, but I, but I, I think the first one is just making sure that we reach out and become part of the conversation. The second one is what is it that we are offering? The, the issue with just the form of the memo from, or that we currently have is that I, I don't know what form the legislation is going to take. And so that, that work product itself may not be enough, but the people that created that work product and their knowledge and how it will affect our potential future rules is what I'm, what I, what I want to, what I think should be considered. So I'm, I'm struggling with the language. I don't disagree that assistance is very broad, Brandon. If there was no other better solution, I, I could accept the friendly amendment of technical assistance, but I do think it's a little broader.
And I guess, you know, you, you raise the concern that you don't know what the legislation is going to look like. And that's you know, my concern as well. When you don't know what the legislation is going to look like in its, you know, first form or even final form, assistance adds that other layer of ambiguity. I don't know if if we could amend it to add, offer technical assistance without taking a position either for or against the legislation. That way it's purely a technical, you know, this is the state of the law. Here's, you know, what the ethical rules are and then providing assistance in that regards. That way there wouldn't be a, an appearance that we're taking a position one way or the other.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Please, yes, I was going to call on you.
Thank you. So, so I completely understand what Josh is saying in terms of the, the, the importance of affirmatively stating this in the resolution and, you know, have no objection to that. Not that it mattered if I did, but have no objection to that, to stating it affirmatively. I do want to be clear, this is, this is exactly what we do on the legislative front. And as a matter of fact, this is exactly what we did when it came to this piece of legislation. And to Brandon's point, you know, technical assistance is a sort of commonly understood term. It is not, we are in no ways taking a position and staff has no authority to take any position anyway, without coming back to the board and getting, getting that direction and approval from the board. Technical assistance is commonly understood as us providing, you know, assistance on drafting language or thinking through issues based on the expertise that we have and is not perceived as us saying, and if you adopt this language as we've drafted it, we will support. And our lobbyist obviously would make crystal clear, as she has to date, that certainly that is not in any way us taking a position.
Thank you, Ms. Hershkovitz. Before we move on, if I could ask someone on the staff to let trustee Dela Cruz back in as a panelist and appreciate that. Trustee Chen has her hand out.
I believe that is an old legacy hand. I will go right.
There's a, there's a 2020 Zoom term, huh? Trustee Shelby?
Yes, I just wanted to offer my, because I was the person who introduced the word technical in my comments previously. I'm comfortable with technical assistance because in my mindset, that's really soup to nuts. That's everything from writing to assessment to expertise. And so I feel like it's just as ambiguous as assistance, but I think I'm, I'm very comfortable with the insertion of the language, technical assistance.
And I see the maker of the motion nodding his head. So Madam Secretary, if you would add that word in so that the motion is clear for the board, I will not go through the trouble of reading it again. Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please take the vote.
Broughton.
Yes.
Chen.
Yes.
Sisneros.
Aye.
Dela Cruz. Is he back in? Be.
I don't know. I should have waited.
I will, I'll come back to him. Dellen.
Yes.
Gonong.
Yes.
Portula.
Yes.
Shelby.
Yes.
Sewell.
Yes.
Stallings.
Yes.
Tony. Is.
Tony's recused.
Trustee Dela Cruz, are you back in?
Yes, I'm back in now.
And your vote?
No.
Okay. The motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Thank you, trustees. Thank you, staff. That was quite a robust discussion and I appreciate everyone's efforts. Okay, let's get back to the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I did just send an email to Mr. Tony to let him know that we have completed the item so he can return to the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Hershkovitz. We'll give him a couple of seconds and I'm not looking at the screen. So if someone could tell me when Mark gets back in, I will recommence.
And I will stop sharing.
Thank you.
And Chair, are we going to return to the beginning of the agenda?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Tony has rejoined us. Thank you for your patience, Mark. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes, item 10. There are three meetings with open session minutes for our consideration. Any, and for those of you who had raised your hands from before, if you wouldn't mind removing them, I'd appreciate that. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, can I have a motion to approve?
Okay, I'll move the minutes.
Brandon's second.
Madam Secretary?
Broughton.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Melanie, is your hand raised for the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Shelby?
This was just a question. I noticed that staff was not identified in terms of the staff that was present at the meetings. Is that commonplace with the state bar?
That is commonplace at the state bar. Trustee Shelby.
Okay, I, I've been involved with a lot of public agencies and I've never seen that. Usually everyone who is engaged at the meeting is accounted for, so thank you for that.
Any questions or discussion? Okay, the vote, please.
Broughton.
Yes.
Chen.
Yes.
Sisneros.
Aye.
Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Dellen.
Yes.
Duran.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Gonong.
Yes.
Portula.
Yes.
Shelby.
Abstain.
Stallings.
Yes.
Tony.
Abstain.
You.
The minutes are adopted.
Yeah, you missed me. This is Arnie, this so well and I'm.
Oh, I, I'm so sorry.
No problem.
Sewell.
Yes.
Okay, very sorry. The minutes are adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Just to clarify, in addition to Mr. Sewell's affirmative vote, my vote will not be registered as I am chairing the meeting. And so I'm not required to vote unless there is a tie.
Correct, and I apologize for that lapse.
Well, that's okay. We're, we're, we're doing as we can here, so appreciate, appreciate your assistance. Next.
Yes, I'd like a quick comment. It, it is my policy to abstain on minutes of meetings I have not attended. Just my policy, just so you know what my abstention was.
Thank you, trustee Tony. Next item is the chair's report. I see that Mr. Seleg may be in the meeting. Sean, if you would, if you would care to make your chair's report now, please do so. If not, we can take you up later.
Sure, let me just do that briefly. Hold on, let me, let me get the agenda in front of me to refresh my memory. There were, I just want to raise two things with the board. Here we go. So first of all, you'll see in your agenda materials that we have, in light of the arrival of our new board members, we have revised committee and other assignments. And so those are in your materials for your information. I don't believe those need approval by the board. Is that right, Vanessa?
Sean, this is Sarah. Yeah, the first item, 30-1, approval of revised board committee liaison and special assignments does need a vote. The second one on the multi-year calendar is informational.
All right, so then Ruben, I'll turn it over to you to invite a motion if you would like.
Certainly. Members of the board, Sean has set forth in your staff report his proposed changes, additions and deletions of necessity to the various board committees. As is customary, when new board members come on and, and old, not old, other board members leave the board. I will not read all of the nominations unless, I'm going to click on, unless somebody would like to hear them. I'm going to take a quick scan of the board. I think what I will do for the benefit of the public who is watching and listening is refer to the staff report if folks want the details. I will just note the names of the proposed chairs of the committees, so, and vice chairs. For the board executive committee, Sean is the chair. He's recommended me as the vice chair. For the finance committee, trustee Sisneros, Sean is recognizing as the chair. We thank trustee Portula for his previous chairmanship of that committee. Regulation and discipline, as is now trustee Stallings as the chair, trustee Chen as the vice chair. Audit committee, trustee Dylan as the new chair, I believe. Thanks for her. And trustees Tony and Shelby, new to the party, are being suggested be placed on the finance committee for Mr. Tony and for both trustee Shelby and trustee Tony on the regulation and discipline committee. Any questions? And if there are none, I would appreciate a motion to approve Sean's recommendations for the committees.
So moved.
A second.
Motion by Stallings, second by Dylan, Madam Secretary?
Broughton.
Mark, are you here?
Did you hear me? I said yes.
Okay, thank you.
Chen.
Trustee Chen, can I see you?
I believe she had to step out of the meeting. Sisneros. Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Dellen.
Yes.
Gonong.
Yes.
Portula.
Yes.
Shelby.
Yes.
Sewell.
Yes.
Stallings.
Yes.
Tony.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Thank you, trustees. Item 30-2 is informational purposes only. Someone wanted to say something?
Yeah, so let me just say a few words about that item, Ruben, if that's okay.
Yes, please.
And so, so I am revising our schedule for future meetings to return to what was the standard for many years, which is two-day board meetings. And I want to share with the board why that is. We went to one-day board meetings for a while because, well, let me back up. During the more tumultuous times for the state bar, when, when I came in. During the more tumultuous times for the state bar, when, when I came in, which were in effect when I joined the board to some extent, sort of cooling off. And the board meetings were extremely lengthy and we sometimes had trouble getting all our business done in two days, even going late on both days. And we even started scheduling special meetings in the months where we don't have regularly scheduled meetings on a rate. We were doing that on a regular basis. In more recent times, our agenda has slimmed down a bit because a lot of the major structural issues with the state bar are behind us. But my experience with the one-day meetings is that it's not, it's often not quite enough. And it creates some very serious, in my opinion, management challenges for the board. Because if we, if we start running out of time at the end of the day, people have other commitments. When we return to normal life, they will be needing to go to the airport to get on planes and so on. And what happens is that items at the end of the agenda often get a little bit rushed. And because public commenters in the past have expressed a preference for closed session to be at the end of the agenda so that they can predictably know when our open session will begin and provide their public comment and so on. That meant that some closed session items, I think, got, were just, did not have enough time to handle appropriately, in my opinion, and were rushed. And some of the closed session items, as the trustees know, are often among the most important things on our agenda. So by having two-day meetings, the Chair has a lot more ability to manage this. So as you saw yesterday, we began our closed session yesterday afternoon when people are more fresh and allowed us a little bit of leeway to go. Yesterday, we didn't have this leeway to go in the evening, but sometimes we might go to six if necessary to get as much done on Thursday as possible before we return on Friday. So I suspect that at most meetings, we're not going to have two full business days of meetings that will have committee meetings and perhaps closed session on Thursday. I think that works very well. And then complete our agenda on Friday. The other advantage of doing things this way is board collegiality, which I think is very important for us to get to know each other as people. Because part of our job on the board is to express our views candidly and they may differ at times. But it helps to have a healthy discussion if we know each other. And having dinner together is especially helpful in that regard. So having a two-day meeting facilitates maximum attendance at the board dinners on Thursday evening. We found that they did not work very well when we would try to have them on the night before a one-day meeting. It's just a dynamic of how things go. And I don't think there is any savings, any substantial savings to the bar from having one-day meetings because most trustees will, when we return to in-person meetings, have to travel to the meeting location and they have to necessarily take a plane flight or, and stay overnight, one night. So either way, we're paying for most trustees for one, for travel, for, pardon, for the hotel room for one night. So that's a long-winded explanation of why I have posed what may seem like an additional burden on you of these two-day meetings. I think you will find in the long run that it's less of a burden because our meetings can be more orderly, more relaxed, and not have situations where we have very important issues in front of us and we don't have quite enough time to work through them completely. So that's the reason I've added the additional meeting days. Please be sure to put them in your calendar. And if, if anyone has comments or would like to discuss this, then that is welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Mr. Vice Chair, I would just like to say that I'm hopeful that 2022 includes no Zoom and only in-person. And I'm hopeful that we can get back to in-person because I really do miss seeing everybody on the board and the collegiality that we share. And I look forward to getting back to that in-person as stuff as soon as physically and hopefully as possible.
Thank you, trustee Stallings. If I could ask someone in the staff to let trustee Chen back into the meeting. I believe I saw her in the attendees and not the panelists, but she's now gone. She back? She's back. Wonderful.
Chair, this is a secretary, if I can interrupt for a moment. I want to go back and clarify something about trustee Shelby's question about the identification of staff on the minutes. While there is no identification of all staff, regardless of whether they participate in the meeting on the front page of the minutes, the staff who are presenters for the individual discussion items in the 700 series or wherever throughout the agenda, they are identified in the minutes. So staff who do participate in the discussion items are identified, but just not on the front page.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Okay. Any, any other comments on, on the meeting schedule? Questions? Thank you, Sean, for the explanation. Makes sense to me.
Thank you. Thanks, Ruben.
Okay. It is after the 12 o'clock hour, traditional lunchtime. Would the board care to push through for a little bit? I see Jose trying to talk, but he's on mute. I was talking to somebody else. Or we can break for 30 minutes to eat.
I believe in lunch.
I wholeheartedly believe in lunch. I'll second that. Okay. It's 12:07. Let's give ourselves the full 30 minutes today. Let's reconvene at 12:40. Thanks, everyone.
Chair, the only ones I don't see at this point are trustees Chen, Dela Cruz, and Shelby.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I see that we are back recording. It is now past 12:40. I will call us back to order after the lunch break. Thank you, everyone, for letting me eat. We have a quorum present, and so let's get back to the agenda and hope that trustees Shelby, Dela Cruz, and I heard there was one more.
Chen.
Chen, join us when they can. Okay. We finished up. We were about to go to the consent calendar. So item 50 on our agenda is the consent.
Excuse me, Chair. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the executive director's report is next, but I don't, I don't know if you took it out of order.
Oh, I did not. You're right. I apologize. Ms. Hershkowitz, please.
I will very quickly get you back to just where you were, Mr. Chair. In recognition of the length of the agenda today and what remains, I will point you to my written remarks that are included as part of the agenda and dispense with an oral presentation today.
Thank you, Ms. Hershkowitz. I am going to assume that the trustees have reviewed Ms. Hershkowitz's report. If there are any questions for her, certainly this would be an appropriate time. If not, I will move on to the consent calendar. I'll give it a minute. Okay, looks like not.
Okay, and just to clarify, Chair, on the consent calendar, in addition to all of the items that are listed as open session consent, we're also including the 5001 that was moved from closed to open. Is that correct?
That was the intention, yes. And this is where I'll ask the trustees whether there are any items they wish to pull from consent. And to remind folks, consent calendar items are typically routine in nature and we include them all in one motion so as to get through the items of business very quickly. Now, if there is a need or a desire, I see Mr. Tony, I'll get you right now. If there is a need or desire to have a discussion on any items, we will, we are happy to pull that item from consent. If there's a quick question or a clarification, we can do that as well. And then I believe Bagley Keane, I know the Brown Act allows for a trustee to note their abstention if they choose to abstain on an item for a reason of a conflict of interest or otherwise. That would just be noted for the record prior to the vote being taken. Did I get that right, Madam Secretary?
Um, if you pull an item from the agenda and they're not recused, they just want a discussion of it, we can have that at the end of the vote on the other items.
Okay. Yep, and the reference was to an abstention. Mr. Tony, trustee Tony.
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair, I would request that the item referring to the contract for Examsoft be taken off the consent for discussion.
Okay, so I'm looking at the agenda. That looks like item 50-1, sub number three, for remote proctoring licenses for the February 2021 bar examination with Examsoft Worldwide, Inc. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
Is there, is there a question that you have that can be responded to by staff or do you care to have the board engage in discussion?
Um, I'm sorry, excuse me for the interruption. This is the secretary again. I am going to promote a panelist, our chief of admin, Steve Mazur, whose item this is, in case there are questions for him.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Trustee Tony, is it, is it a question that's a quick one or will it require discussion?
I want a discussion on it. Thank you.
Okay, we'll pull that item. So the consent count, any other items to pull from the consent calendar, trustees? Looks like not.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to clarify. I apologize if you said this already. And we're including item 5001 that had moved from the closed session?
That's correct. And so the consent calendar now can, now consists of all the items listed on the agenda under consent, with the exception of 50-1 sub three. So that would be 50-1, dash two, 54-111, 54-121, 54-141, and then 5001, which has four sums.
Mr. Chair, this is Jose. I move it as you just described.
Thank you, trustee Sisneros. Is there a second?
I second.
Madam Secretary.
Was that trustee Dylan?
Yes.
I'm sorry, yes. Okay, Broughton.
Yes.
Chen. Okay, not here. Sisneros.
Aye.
Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yes.
Gonong.
Yes.
Portula.
Yes.
Shelby.
Aye.
Soel.
Yes.
Stallings.
Yes.
Tony.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I will now take up item 50-1 sub three, Examsoft. Trustee Tony, please.
Yeah, I, I'm concerned at the extension of this contract without an independent investigation of the widely reported problems with Examsoft's administration of the online bar exam in October. I, I know I've read of problems in the press. I've heard individually, you know, from, directly, at least from one test taker, that there was a problem. And it seems to me that the problem, you know, affected quite a number of test takers. I would like to see that if we're going to extend this contract, there needs to be a investigation that's external, not Examsoft looking at itself and reporting on itself, but some other entity taking a look, interviewing the people who had a problem with the bar exam and seeing, you know, why there were technical difficulties and what culpability Examsoft has in terms of what they're going to do in the future to prevent it from happening and what type of action should be taken to hold them accountable for the problems in October. And I don't see that in this consent item.
Thank you, trustee Tony. Ms. Hershkowitz, I'll turn it over to you or your designated staff to respond to Mr. Tony's questions and concerns and then we'll open it up to the board.
Certainly. I will give it a shot. And I also have Ms. Amy, excuse me, Amy Nunez, Director of the Office of Admissions, is among the attendees and prepared to supplement any information that is necessary that I do not have at my fingertips. So we have all certainly heard about concerns or technological problems that individuals have expressed that they had with the exam. And I think we all share, all of the trustees share the, the view that if a single person had a technological issue that may have impacted their ability to take the exam, that is something that we certainly would not, would never want to see. We don't want that to happen. Overall, however, I would say that the, that although there may be individual problems, there were certainly, overall, the exam was a success. When we look at the 70-something thousand, I think it was 76,000 answers that were, that needed to be uploaded, 97.3% of all of the answers were uploaded. And some percentage of, of those that weren't uploaded were people who did not show for the exam at all. In large, overall, the exam was a success. We did a post-exam survey of, we sent it to almost 10,000 applicants. Over half of the applicants that we sent the survey to responded. 15% of them indicated that they did have technological problems that required them to call Examsoft during the exam. But that is in part, that number is in part affected by self-selection. Those people who chose to answer the survey, the results that we had, the information we had from Examsoft was that overall, 8% of California's exam takers contacted Examsoft. That could be for a technological problem. It could be, I'm not quite sure where to find my password, could be for a variety of issues. But the, the overall upload rate, as high as it was, to me suggests an overall successful exam. Additionally, one of the things that I found compelling about the results of the survey was despite concerns that people had going into the exam about whether the, their area would be quiet, whether there'd be technological issues, whether there'd be anything that interfered with their ability to take the exam. Despite some folks nonetheless reporting that they did have those issues, which they felt interfered with their ability to demonstrate their competence on the exam. Overall, 88% of respondents said that if they had to take an exam again, they would take it in an online format. I, I think that, you know, we continue to work with Examsoft. They are the only authorized provider at this point for the remote online exam because we do have to work with the National Conference of Bar Examiners, which puts on, which is responsible for the, the 200-question multiple choice part of the exam that most states deliver, and California being one of them. And so they have authorized only Examsoft at this point to be, to deliver that exam. And finally, I would note that, that we have an existing contract with Examsoft. This contract is a, the, the contract that is before you amends that contract not by providing additional funds to the contract, but rather reallocating those funds essentially by recognizing that, that since there is a, we are planning for a remote exam consistent with what the Supreme Court ordered us to do, that, that this contract allocates the funding to the exam ID function, which verifies the identification of the individual taking the exam, the exam monitor function, which is the, the part that, that records the person taking the exam, and the two levels of human proctor review that we've, that we are asking the proctor to do before it comes to us. So, so I'm not sure if any of that information is sufficient, trustee Tony, to affect your view of this, but I hope that is helpful.
Thank you, Ms. Hershkowitz. Trustee Tony. Any other questions or comments?
Here's what I'll say. I'd be happy, unless anybody, unless any other trustee has something to say, I'm happy to bring closure to, to this item. And it can go to a vote. I'm going to vote no.
Trustee Portula.
Let me.
Let me, um. I don't know why we've taken such thorny issues in the beginning. I mean, this is quite a meeting on our first two issues. I was hoping for a little more lightheartedness here. Let me try to add a little context. I think I heard in Ms. Herskowitz a little bit of PTSD, so let me just start with that. This has been a monumental and Herculean effort on the bar exam. It's one in which we were thrust into position by the Supreme Court to deliver an exam remotely that has never been done before. And in doing so, and I say this as part of a liaison for the board dealing with the exam. And so in doing so, there were a lot of issues that we tried to resolve. And I think everybody's happy about the ultimate result and thinks that there was a high probability there could have been more issues had we not put the kind of time and effort that we did in. Is it perfect today? No, it's not perfect. And I think we know that. In fact, I think that this is one of those cases where you can't let the the perfect get in the way of the good. We have very small numbers of technical issues. We led a number of states going through Examsoft-type issues. All of that being said, I don't think trustee Tony's request is one that's so far from the direction that we've already taken and frankly, a direction that maybe we could take one more step. I think what he was saying, and I understand coming in the position that he's coming in, if I may, is that there were enough people, there were some that were affected negatively, and we should probably dig in and look at how we improve again. And I don't know that that's specific to this contract, but I will say we have a number of third-party experts, not Examsoft, that we have contracted with, we may still be contracting with. I don't know that for sure. Amy or Donna could express that, that are on the technical side, that are on the access side, that are on a bunch of different areas, trying to help, frankly, on the health side, trying to help us make sure that we can give the safest and most secure remote exam. I will say, without this contract today, we will not be able to give an exam in February. And so that's the decision that the board would be making if they took the direction of not approving this. The exam could not go through remotely. There is no other ability to do it. And so does that mean that it has to go? No, we could make another decision. But we've been given direction by the court. We gave, I believe, a very good exam online, and I think you can see that by and the information Ms. Herskowitz gave and passage rate, et cetera. But moving forward, that doesn't mean it can't get better. And we do have third parties that are doing that, that are digging deep into what their technical restraints are and what some of the problems were, and we're able to fix some of them. So if there was a, if there was a way, Ms. Herskowitz, to continue that, to take it one step further, I would seek trustee Tony's advice and/or participation in that next stage of, you know, how can we improve the exam?
Thank you, Josh. I don't see any hands raised. With that, I will entertain a motion.
Jose, I'll approve the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I missed to the second ones. Juan?
Yes.
Trustee Dela Cruz. Thank you, Madam Secretary.
Broughton.
Yes.
Chen. Sisneros.
Hi.
Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Dellen.
Yes.
Gonong.
Yes.
Pertula.
Yes.
Shelby.
Stane.
Soo.
Yes.
Stallings.
Yes.
Tony.
Nay.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. That takes us to section one hundred of our agenda, reports and board committees. Item one twelve is the approval of the two thousand twenty-one legislative priorities. Ms. Herskowitz, is there a staff report on this?
Typically, the chair of the committee would report out on this, but Mr. McLeod, I'm sure certain is prepared to do it in lieu of that.
Happy to. The two thousand twenty-one legislative priorities include a number of different items that we've grouped under specific headings, one of which relates to improving the state bar's capacity to collect debt that is owed to the state bar. Also, providing additional tools to the Office of Chief Trial Counsel, in particular tools that allow the Chief Trial Counsel to get information shared from law enforcement. And then two items that stand alone, one more of a technical cleanup issue related to when an attorney who has been placed involuntarily in an inactive status as a result of incarceration, when that attorney should be returned to active status. It appears to be an oversight in the statute that governs that, that the state bar court is seeking to have redressed. And then the final issue relates to the formula for the IOTA program, something that had been referenced previously in some of our public comments, an effort to change the IOTA formula from one hundred and twenty-five percent of the poverty line as being the maximum income that a recipient of services that are funded through IOTA can receive to two hundred percent of the federal poverty line. We're very, we're very excited that this is being done in conjunction with partnership, the legal aid community. The state bar is really serving its support of the legal aid community on this item. I should note that the legislative priorities were amended, and there is an amended resolution that was approved by the Board Executive Committee on one of the, one of the items related to providing the Office of Chief Trial Counsel with information from law enforcement. An objection was raised regarding whether the the receipt of information, things like toxicology reports and other criminal history information for attorneys who are accused of a crime may be excessively intrusive and may not sufficiently respect the due process rights of the attorneys who have been accused of a crime. That item has been put over and taken off of the legislative priorities for now. And the proposal was amended to move that item to the Regulation and Discipline Committee for further discussion so that we could resolve that issue as expeditiously as possible. In case there's a way to bring that back onto the legislative priorities, but for now, that particular item is no longer on the legislative priorities. The resolution that was approved by the Executive Committee has that amendment on it, and I think that now might be a good time to display that, if you would, Madam Secretary.
All right. Sorry, we're jumping around a lot, so. Let me get to it.
I won't take that personally, Madam Secretary.
Oh, no. Expertly done. There you go.
Thank you. Mr. McLeod, thank you for the thorough report and lighting my burden a little bit. I appreciate that. As the board can see, the recommendation from the Executive Committee is on the screen for your consideration. Because this comes from committee, there is no need for a motion or a second. Is that correct, Madam Secretary, or just no need for a motion?
That's correct.
And so unless there is discussion, and I'm checking the hands, I see Mr. Stallings. I'm sorry, Doug. Go ahead.
I was going to just direct your attention to trustee Stallings.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So similar to the concerns that Mr. Broughton had yesterday, I have a concern about the Public Utilities Code Section two eight nine one sub D sub twelve. And that's the clarification that telephone companies may share information with the state bar in a manner similar to information shared with law enforcement. Generally, if this type of information is shared with law enforcement in a criminal setting, there is a search warrant that is signed by a judge, and the judge makes that determination of whether or not there's probable cause to issue such a search of these types of records. And certainly, there's a lot of case law on, you know, the expansion of cell phones and telephone records and really how that evidence can be used. If a district attorney's office is seeking to subpoena records such as this, generally, the courts require a declaration showing why it is, you know, why it is necessary to justify that, that intrusiveness. So I would ask that this section also be referred to RAD and potentially that we could have co-pract, look at, look at that and any other issues. I'm not familiar with the way the state bar goes about getting telephone records now, but I would just be concerned that that there might be some privacy issues there.
Thank you, Brandon. I am going to ask that the Chief Trial Counsel or someone from her office be promoted into the panelists because I thought I heard trustee Stallings ask a question about something within their purview. Do we know whether Ms. Lawrence is available or Mr. Moat?
I am not seeing them at this time.
Ms. Herskowitz, is there someone else you would recommend to answer the question, or we can certainly proceed to a vote? I just figured I'd give them the opportunity if they wanted it.
I don't see them either. If we wanted to take a second, I'm sure that I can summon one or both Ms. Lawrence or Mr. Moat to the meeting.
Trustee Stallings, do you think that that would be helpful? Or any board member, for that matter. It sounds like trustee Stallings may be making a motion to approve the item with an amendment.
That would be my motion.
And
Is there a second to that motion?
I would, trustee Stallings, I just wanted to note that the the code section that we're talking about for this priority is, you mentioned it's the PUC code. It's PUC, Public Utilities Code Section twenty-eight ninety-one D. So that's, for purposes of an amendment, that's the one we would want to focus on.
Correct.
Okay, so that's a general description of the motion. Is there a second to see whether there will be discussion and/or response from staff? Or input from staff, rather? Without a second, the motion will die.
Well, I'll second it.
Okay. I see trustee Pertula wants to speak.
Mr. Chair, I'm just trying to understand. The motion is just to remove it and send it back to RAD?
My understanding is that's correct in the same manner as the BNP code six zero five four point one would be. Is that correct, Mr. Stallings?
It is. Okay, understand. Thank you.
Any discussion on the motion? Donna, should we wait for OCTC?
Ms. Lawrence is going to be joining us any second.
Okay.
I've spotted her and have promoted her.
Trustee Stallings, when, yeah, thank you. Hello, Ms. Lawrence. Thank you for joining us. I'm going to ask trustee Stallings to repeat the portion of his commentary or question unless you are already prepared to answer. This relates to the phone records.
Sure, I'd like to hear the question.
Great.
So how does the state bar go about getting telephone records now? Do we have any subpoena power over that?
Yes, we do have subpoena power over a telephone company located in California. Yes.
Okay, and then as far as what we're seeking to change in Public Utilities Code two eight nine sub D sub twelve, what would, how would that change what we do at the state bar?
Okay, that's, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to refresh my recollection on what it is that we're talking about before I can answer your question.
The
Brandon, is there? Oh, go ahead, Doug.
The proposal contained within the agenda item is really only a summary, and I don't know if it would be helpful to share it. Nonetheless, it's it's here. And I think maybe part of what we're getting a little bit hung up on relates to the specifics of what is being proposed. The legislative priorities are generally proposed as intent, as goals that the state bar has. We don't provide specific language, so I don't know if the specific issues that you have, Brandon, with trustee Stallings, with regard to the safeguards that would be in place are things that would, could be addressed in the drafting of the actual language. But the intent is really to facilitate the sharing of these records with many details to be filled out in terms of actual drafting of legislation.
Okay. I think with that clarification, then, you know, as long as, you know, staff will work with RAD and OCTC and developing something that has sufficient safeguards, I'm okay withdrawing that amendment.
See, are in consideration of this matter.
Okay. Thank you, trustee Stallings. Trustee Broughton, are you on board with that? What I've heard Brandon say essentially is there's no need to amend the item as presented from the executive committee, and we will go straight to a vote.
That's fine. What's on the, it's on the screen is what we're voting on.
That's correct. We're not adding the language about the PUC.
That's fine.
Public Utilities Code Section. Okay. Without further discussion, we will take a vote, Madam Secretary.
Broughton.
Yes.
Chen. Sisneros. Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Dellen.
Yes.
Gonong.
Yes.
Pertula.
Yes.
Shelby.
Yes.
Soo.
Yes.
Stallings.
Yes.
Tony.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item one twenty-two is from the Regulation and Discipline Committee. They propose state bar rules setting forth procedure for responding to complaints against state bar court judges. Trustee Stallings, please.
All right. Thank you. Good afternoon. Most everybody who's on this call was on the RAD committee yesterday with the exception of our two newly added RAD committee members, and that's Mr. Mark Tony and Ms. Melanie Shelby. So welcome to RAD. This will be a little bit of a review from yesterday, so I'll try and keep it short. But essentially, this item sets up an internal administrative framework for investigation of allegations against state bar court judges that could result in liability for the state bar. So this policy follows an extensive and careful internal deliberation and consultation process between RAD and State Bar Court over a two-year period, which was started by Alan Steinrecker and Sean Salee. The proposed policy appropriately balances the independence of the state bar court judges with the state bar's need to manage its legal risks and does not purport to exert any authority to discipline a state bar court judge. So while the board has administrative authority over the state bar court and over the judges to the extent that they are employees of the state bar for purposes of indemnification and representation under the Government Claims Act, this policy does not infringe what, in any way, the California Supreme Court's ultimate authority to discipline or retire a state bar court judge following an investigation by the Commission on Judicial Performance on behalf of the Supreme Court pursuant to Rule nine point one one sub D of the Rules of Court. So because the board is committed to ensuring fairness in this process, including by allowing judges a full opportunity to participate in any investigation conducted under this rule and by maintaining the confidentiality of these personnel matters to the extent possible, we recommend this, the adoption of this this policy. So using the internal policy, complaints regarding state bar court judges shall be sent to the executive director for determination of whether they state allegations that, if true, could create liability for the state bar. And one of the questions that was brought up yesterday was whether or not the executive director would then refer those to Office of General Counsel. And generally, that is what would happen. So if the executive director determines that the allegations could create liability for the state bar, the executive director will report them to the RAD chair, who will conduct an independent investigation. the executive director will report them to the RAD chair, who will conduct an independent investigation and recommend appropriate remedial actions within the state bar's administrative authority. And so those remedial actions could include reassigning effective support staff or early resolution of potential legal claims against the bar. We work closely with State Bar Court, including presiding Judge Catherine Purcell and Judge Roland, who at the last year was the assistant presiding, and several concerns were raised. And myself and staff did our best to address those concerns. A couple of the concerns were that there was a concern that this would require state bar court judges to determine liability potential on out on all allegations, including disqualification motions and complaints from the public and litigants. And really, what this what this policy does is it, it's a require, it's a blanket requirement that all such complaints be reported to the executive director. That way, there's no question as to whether or not something was swept under the rug or something untoward happened, have occurred regarding the the claim. So currently, State Bar Court forwards all judicial complaints to the Committee of Judicial Performance. And then they do also report to HR if the conduct involves state bar staff. So this rule really codifies practices already in place, but also also provides for that blanket protection that all complaints would then be forwarded to to the executive director. There was a concern about whether or not the Public Records Act, whether or not documents generated in a investigation would be subject to CPRA disclosure. And generally, personnel records such as these are exempt from such disclosure. If there was a lawsuit filed, then that becomes a different question. And then the last major concern was on the remedial actions, whether or not that would include the Board of Trustees disciplining a judge. And like I said before, the necessary remedial action would involve something like the transferring of support staff members who might be impacted. So on that, I will submit, and if you have any questions, I see Vanessa's here and happy to answer anything.
Thank you, Brandon. Any questions for the Chair of the RAD Committee? Any discussion? Okay, Madam Secretary.
Broughton?
Yes.
Chen? Cisneros?
Hi.
Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Dellen?
Yes.
Gonong?
Yes.
Portula?
Yes.
Shelby?
I.
Soo.
I.
Stallings?
Yes.
Tony?
I.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
And Mr. Vice Chair, can I just take a moment of personal privilege and thank a couple of people? So I would just like to thank Judge Purcell and everybody at State Bar Court who worked in a very collaborative way in this to increase the public's confidence in our our court, our discipline system, and really the work of Alan Steinrecker, Sean Salee, Ruben Duran, Highland Chin, and then on the staff level, so many people worked on this, but really just want to call out Vanessa and James. So thank you so much for your work, and it's good to bring this project to an end.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is there a report from the Finance Committee?
No report.
Thank you. How about audit?
No report.
Thank you, Mr. and Madam Chair. Move on to item 701, I believe, which is the budget. Mr. Harper?
Yes. Good afternoon, Chair Duran and members of the board. I'm glad to have this opportunity to go over the highlights of the 2021 budget with you. And let me do a mic check. Can you hear me?
We can hear you and well, welcome, Mr. Harper. We're glad to have you.
Yes, thank you. So as you know, the the preparation of the budget is a very large entity-wide tasks at all offices and divisions of the state bar get involved in the preparation of the budget. And so I would like to thank them, and particularly, I would like to recognize David Wolf from the Office of Finance, who was the main person, main focal point for gathering the information and preparing the document that you have in front of you. The Finance Committee reviewed an earlier version of this budget at their December meeting. There have not been what I what I would call substantial changes since then. There have been some changes, but nothing in orders of magnitude, just in tweaking final numbers. So the presentation for today, next slide, Veronica, is that I want to share a few comments with you, observations, go over the go over the budget, you know, at the bar-wide level and at the general fund level, and then go into a little more detail on some of the specific drivers of the budget, like reserves, mandatory license fees and personnel costs. And and lastly, talk about our approach, our proposed approach on funding of building projects, building improvements and IT projects. Next slide. So as we prepared the budget, we prioritized how to allocate resources based upon three overarching priorities. The first one is, of course, sticking to the core mission of the state bar. The second one is funding elements of the strategic plan, and the third one is meeting the requirements that are spelled out in the in the fee bill. Like any year, this year had its challenges of how to how to create a budget. And so just to highlight some of the challenges for you, as always, this is a this is a entity that's funded on an annual basis. And so the fact that the fee bill is not multi-year makes it challenging to to put together the budget and indeed to answer typical questions like, do we have enough money to? And and not knowing exactly whether and how much and when we're going to get a fee bill approved, it's hard to answer questions like that. So that's a challenge. Building and IT projects, you may recall that, starting last year, the fee bill funded our billing improvement needs over a 10-year period of time and our IT projects over a five-year period of time. But those are projects that we need now. And so to think that we're going to wait until we can collect that much money over that period of time to do the projects is kind of a problem, and we have a we have a proposal I'll discuss with you later on in the presentation. Personnel costs are obviously the biggest expense of the state bar, and we had some some previously negotiated increases, both in a merit increase and a cost of living increase on top of the typical increases in retirement costs and healthcare costs. So that was a challenge. And then this, of course, being a pandemic year, created quite a few uncertainties for us. The exam, as you know, went remote. And I think that we decided that we would keep it remote in 2021. So that's how the the budget is built on that assumption. But what what will the future be was a was a certainly a consideration. And how much of the costs that we incurred in converting into a remote exam was, you know, is a is a one-time cost and how much of it is a recurring cost is a is a challenge. Building space and the use of the building buildings is a challenge, both in the improvements area, which I which I talked about, how do we fund the building improvements? But also, we needed to make some improvements in 2020 related to making it a safer environment in the pandemic and how many of those costs then reduced and how many of them go away. And the janitorial costs, which we incurred quite a few additional costs for deep cleaning and daily cleaning, you know, becomes a guess as to how we are going to, how much we're going to incur in 2021. Tenant lease revenue and and predicting what effect the pandemic is having on our tenants. So we've reduced in the budget our tenant lease revenue assumption by a million dollars, you'll see. Interest revenue, arguably part of the pandemic result, has gone way down and therefore our interest revenue in the general fund and even more importantly, our IOTA interest, as you'll see, has gone way down in 2021. And travel and catering, as you might guess, went to virtually zero after the pandemic hit in 2020. And our assumption is that we had to make an assumption, so we went to about 50% of a normal year in our assumptions for 2021, assuming that it will come back at some point. And for the first time, we are assuming that there are the same number of attorneys practicing and paying dues in California in all in all pre, in all, at least recent years, that number has been growing. And because of the COVID implications, we are predicting, or at least we're budgeting, zero growth in that area. Next, next slide. So here's a look of at our bar-wide revenues for three years. This is budgeted revenues for three years. So you can see that on the mandatory fee side that there's a decline here. And you may recall that the the biggest issue is the Client Security Fund had a one-year bump in 2020 from $40 to $80, and it and it reverted back to its more normal $40 per attorney in 2021. And then there was a lawyer assistance program fee holiday in 2020 where it went from 10 to 1 that year and now it's back up to 10. So that offsets part of that $40 decline on the Client Security Fund. And there was a 3% general fund amount in 2020 for to bump our reserves that did not recur in 2021. So all told, next slide, all told, the the mandatory fees went from $497 in 2020 to $463 in 2021, as you can see here. So go back one slide, Veronica. So the the rest of these numbers look relatively flat, but I do want to point out that on the grant side, I mentioned that IOTA revenue is predicted to be way down because interest rates are down. So that's about a $22 million decline in IOTA, but a similar increase due to a equal access grant for homeless prevention that came in or predicted to come in in 2021. So that leaves grants approximately the same. Okay, go two four, two slides forward, and we'll look at expenses bar-wide. So this shows salaries and benefits in the first group of columns, again, three years of budgets. It's it, for all intents and purposes, it's flat for compared to last year. And that is a combination of one net new FTE, and we'll look at FTEs on a net on a next slide. But it's, it also includes the merit increase and the COLA increase that I mentioned to you. And all of that is offset by an increase in the vacancy assumption factor. So we assumed in 2020 that there would be a 5% vacancy factor in terms of all the positions in the state bar won't be filled at all at any one point in time. The the actual factor ended up to be around 9%, and so we're raising the assumption in 2021 to 7%. So that offset tho those increases on the merit and COLA and is leaving the expenses relatively flat. Grants, you can see, declined precipitously from last year. And again, that's primarily due to IOTA. Since IOTA revenues are down substantially, the payments out are down, planned to be down substantially as well. And 3 million, sorry, 9 million of the decline is due to a lower drawdown from the bank settlement fund. You can see other expenses had a decline of about $7.5 million, and 7 million of that decreases due to a decrease in Client Security Fund payouts to claimants. Okay, next slide. So this is a view of our proposed staffing for 2021. So you can see that we are proposing one net increase from 609 to 610. But that is composed of 11 new positions, offset by 10 suspended positions, meaning a hiring freeze on 10 of the positions. So we didn't fund them in the budget, don't plan on filling them during the current year. And and therefore, we have a net increase of one. You can see on the far right column that five of those increased positions are in admissions. Two are in the Office of the Chief Trial Counsel. And those, by the way, are in addition to positions that were expressly funded by the fee bill in the prior year. And then a couple of new IT positions and a state bar court position. Next slide. So this is a, this is an overview of the of this of the budget by individual fund. So the general fund, you can see, is down about 3 or 4 million, both in the expense and revenue side, and we're going to look at that in a little bit more detail by itself. Because the general fund is really the most important fund in terms of the budget because it has all the discretionary funding, the rest of the funds, for the most part, adjust their expenses based upon their available revenue. So the general fund becomes the the critical point, and we'll we'll delve into that a little deeper. But if you look at the rest of the funds here on this page, the biggest fluctuations are, you can look at the Bank Settlement Fund, this is the third line in, and see that, as I, as I mentioned, a $9 million decline in the drawdown of available funding from that fund. So you, so you recall that was a subtle, big settlement in 2015, 16, and we've been drawing down funds on it since that point as we get down to the to the end of the available funding, which there's about 7 million left in there now, that those that that amount is being distributed over three years to fund foreclosure prevention and community development collaborations. The Client Security Fund, the next line down, you can see the revenues are down 7.9 million and expenses are down 7.6 million, primarily, primarily, almost solely because the fee bill restored the licensee fees to the historical level of $40 per active attorney versus the one-year increase last year to 80. And then the Equal Access Fund, a couple lines later, shows the revenues are up 22 million. Again, they got that homeless prevention grant or they're planning to get that homeless prevention grant in 2021. So that will increase the revenues there. That that amount is intended to be distributed over a three-year period. Next slide. So this is the, this is the general fund. So before we look at the 2021 general fund budget, let's talk for a minute about the 2020 and how we're ending up 2020. So we've we've ended the year, these are not quite audit, these are not audited numbers, but the 2020 projection is our current actual un-audited numbers. You can see that that we came in very close to the the budget in the revenue side. You can see mandatory license fees are down a little bit because of slower growth in the number of attorneys than was anticipated. And you can see that other revenues is up. And that's a smattering of a lot of different fees, but the biggest ones being LLP renewals were above budget 500,000, and fingerprinting fees were above budget by 300,000. When you look at the expenses, you can see that we are substantially under budget for the for the year. And a large part of it, I I believe, is the pandemic-related. The things, things changed a lot this year, and nothing, nothing probably bigger than the personnel side, where you can see 7.6 million of the savings 7.6 million of the savings was there. As I mentioned, a 9% vacancy factor vacancy rate in our positions during the year. The only other big change was in the supplies and equipment where there was delayed I T projects. Again, a lot of the decisions to delay some of these projects was the fact that we were moving to remote operations and it definitely changes priorities and and how I T spends their time. But things like call center software, upgrades to the video conference scene, upgrades to the firewall. The LA refi, refi, refresh got delayed. Or intentionally pushed back to a future year. And then if you look at the bottom, then the, the reserves, the net change. So reserves went up by 10.7 million over what we thought they were going to do, which is go down by 1.3 million. So, so we're going to have a enhancement of the reserves starting 2021 of that 9.3 million. Next slide. So then let's look at the 2021 budget. So you can see that we were comparing it to the 2020 budget. And you can see in the second column that we're budgeting about $3 million less in revenue than the prior year. That is primarily in three areas. One is that we lost the $3 per attorney for the building of reserves in the general fund. That amounts to about 600,000. We're budgeting about 1 million less in interest revenue because of the declining interest rates. And about 1 million less in lease revenue due to tenants that we expect to move out and or have difficulty paying. So those are down on the expense side. Again, personnel cost being the biggest number. We're, we're planning for that to be flat. Again, with the merit and cola increases being offset by the increase in the vacancy factor that I mentioned when we were looking at the bar wide budget. Building operations is, is up go, plan to be up about 1.2 million. That is a combination of things, including increase in janitorial costs. The 2020 budget didn't assume a pandemic. Now we're assuming a pandemic. So janitorial costs are going to be up 250,000. Repairs primarily on the elevators that are not yet replaced. Up about 150,000 and insurance costs are going up about 250,000. If you look at the equipment line item, equipment is planned to go from down about $3 million. Primarily that is our proposal to finance the building improvements rather than pay for it in the operations budget. And so I, I, I want to hold off that, the conversation to till we get to the slides there, but, but that's the, the, the amounts that were, that were fee bill funded are not in this 2021 budget. And then other expenses you can see down a little bit, that's primarily travel and catering where we're budgeting less in 2021 than we budgeted last year. And indirect costs is up about a million. So this is costs that are incurred in the administrative area that get allocated to other funds. And the single biggest part of that increase is that we began contributing the, the actuarially required contribution to fund the retiree healthcare. And so that gets allocated back to the, back to the departments. Okay, now, oh, and then, then you can see at the bottom of the page that, that then we, we have projected beginning reserves that are in good shape because of I, what I showed you on the prior slide where we came in better than than we anticipated in 2020. And then we're budgeting a very minor, almost break even budget, 147,000 negative to end the, end the year budget wise at 20.4 million, which is about 22% of operating expenses. Which is within the, but within the board's project, board's policy of having between 17 and 30% of reserves in the general fund. Next slide. So, so then oh, these are just comments that I just made to you. So skip that next slide. So this shows the reserves for each of the funds at the end of 2021. If, if reality comes in consistent with the budget. So this is our predicted projected reserve levels at the end of 2021. So you can see actually go to the next slide. I want to refresh your memory on what your, what your board reserve policy says. So you've defined reserves as working capital. Current assets minus current liabilities. And you've defined when you can use reserves and how to replenish them once they're used. Significantly for our discussion now, you've set a minimum reserve target of two months of operating expenses, which equates to 17% of operating expenses. So we as staff shoot for that. You've said in your policy that if we go below 10% of reserves, that we must come to you for separate board approval on, on any uses that would take us below that 10%. And that if it goes above 30% and stays there for more than six months, that we need to come to you with a spin down plan. So we're using the funds in a current, current manner. And then significantly grant funded funds are exempt. As I told you, grant funded funds primarily just spend whatever money that they have available to them. So to calculate reserves based upon operating expenses, literally the math doesn't work. It becomes N A. And, and so no policy was set by you on the minimum amounts that need to be in grant funded funds. So now go back one slide. So now looking at the projected reserve levels by fund. You can see that the general fund is within that 17 to 30% target level that you've set. The admissions fund slightly above. But we don't anticipate that that will stay there for a six month period of time because you can see in the, in the 2021 budgeted surplus deficit column that it's spending at a deficit so that it would continue, that if that continued, it would eat that reserve back within a short period of time. Client security fund similarly, we don't anticipate that staying above 30% for six months. So even though it's a pretty big percentage, the numbers are not that big and we expect to spin that down relatively soon. The elimination of bias similarly to the admissions fund is spending at a deficit and the numbers are small. You can see that will eat into that reserve. And so we don't anticipate that staying at above 30% for six months, a period of time. The remaining three near the bottom of the page, though, we do believe that those are probably going to stay above that level for a period of time and staff will therefore intend to bring you a spin down plans on those three funds. Right, next slide. Two slides because we looked at the next one already. So funding for the building projects, building improvements. Veronica, two, two slides forward, please. This, this slide, when we get to it, shows that that there were five, there were six projects that were funded by the fee bill for, and and the fee bill funded these projects at $4 per attorney for 10 years.
Kevin, since we're not seeing the slide, maybe you can just read off what those projects are. We're getting there now.
One, one more, one more Veronica. There we go. Very good. Okay. So, so these six projects. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven projects. Were funded by the fee bill again, $4 per attorney for for a 10 year period of time. And and then because this, the, the, these amounts were determined two years ago, then we've updated it in the middle column of what the amount is currently estimated to do these projects. And so you can see it's a substantial increase from what we have been funded. And the last column then is the amount that we anticipate spending in 2021. So yeah, go, go on to the next slide. And similarly on the, on the I T projects, the fee bill funded these three projects at $5 per attorney for five years. And and the amount needed, we've, we put that column in as well, not much changed from, from two years ago. And what we plan to spend for this year. There are a couple of other I T projects listed there that were not funded by the fee bill that are still important, that we still need to do and that we have included in the budget. But, but now let's talk about our, our problem and our proposed solution for funding these projects. So, so the, the problem, as, as I alluded to is that we need these, we need to fund these projects now, and the fee bill has given us money over a long period of time to fund these projects. Five years on the I T side, 10 years on the building improvement side. So our options are, we don't do these projects for many years until we accumulate enough money, or we go out and finance it, finance them with a bank loan and use the fee bill funded amounts as they come back in to repay the bank loan. And that is our that is our proposal is to fund them like that. So that would mean that the, that the 5.2 million in the middle column here for I T projects. And on the prior page, the 13.3 million amount needed for billing improvements would be funded, that's 18.5 million dollars in a in a bank loan. And at the same time, we would propose to refinance the debt on the San Francisco building, which is about $5 million debt at 4.26% currently. And similarly to the LA building loan that was recently for refinance, there is a debt reserve fund that would be returned to us upon refinancing of the San Francisco building, in this case, 2.5 million dollars. So as I, as I pointed out to you in the building improvement side, Veronica, go back one. The, the amount needed is substantially more than was originally estimated and therefore funded in the fee bill. And so our proposal for that is to use the 4.6 million dollars that was returned from the debt service reserve fund when the LA building was refinanced to fund that difference between those two. But then to go get a bank loan only for the amount that was funded in the fee bill. So that, so that it is clear that we are funding specifically what we were approved for. And that when we get the, the amounts in over the four, over the five year period for I T projects and the 10 year for building improvements that we would use the amounts that are collected on a dollar for dollar basis to pay down the amount of the loan. So that's the, that's the overview of what we are proposing. And if you go to the last slide, our if, if you're in agreement with, with our proposals, then this, this resolution would mean that, that you would be giving us final, you would, you would be approving the final budget, providing us final authorization to spend. You would be authorizing us to make corrections and adjustments before filing with the state legislature, which is due February 28th. We don't anticipate a lot of technical corrections and adjustments. But we will be adding the executive director's message and an update on the strategic plan elements. And, and you know, any internal inconsistencies that come to our attention during that period of time, we would like your authorization to remedy before we file. And this would this resolution will authorize in concept the financing of the building improvements and I T projects with a bank loan. But a separate agenda item would be brought to you to seek final approval when the details of that were worked out. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Harper, thank you for the comprehensive report. Well presented and easy to follow. Speaking of the executive director's message, I will pass over to Donna. She would like to offer some words before we open it up to the board to questions and or comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Kevin. That, that was a very comprehensive presentation. And thank you and your staff for all of the work that you did on this. When, when Kevin presented sort of the first roll up of the budget, we were looking at an 18, 18 million dollar in the red and we spent, some of that was, was just on paper, was not actually a deficit. But we spent a lot of time working to, to get that into the condition that it is today. And so Kevin and his team deserve a lot of credit. I do want to mention, I, I don't think Kevin said this. The we are committed to implementing with fidelity, the, the fee increase in a specific way that the fee increase was directed to the, by the legislature that we allocated. And in doing so, as Kevin noted, we are anticipating revenue of about 1.8 million last year, this year, and for the next few years for both the, those I T special projects and the capital improvements. The, the reserve balance that Kevin talked about includes includes the fact that we would, we budgeted for the revenue of that 1.8 million coming in in 2021, but we did not. We did not include in the budget, the outlay of the 1.8 million that we would pay in a debt service payment upon the securing of a loan. So as Kevin mentioned, our plan would be each year we would pay in debt service, even if this is more than the, the loan required, but we would pay off the amount that we received in revenue to ensure that fidelity with the legislature's direction. So we would likely come back to you with a, a budget amendment mid-year to authorize that additional expenditure of the 1.8 million dollars that's not currently set forth in the budget. There is the, the amount of reserves that Kevin also projected through, by the end of 2021 includes, as he said, that 4.6 million dollars that we recaptured the debt service reserve that was on hold. And we recaptured following the refinancing of the loan on the LA building. That money would be used to fund those additional capital improvement costs that Kevin described to you. And so as a result, that, you know, that yes, is technically money in the reserve as is the 1.8, as is the 1.8 that was collected in 2020, but those will all ultimately be used to, to pay off the debt service should you approve us going forward with that loan. So that's about 8.2 million dollars. And I just wanted to, to be clear on that point. And with that, Kevin and I both and others, depending on the questions, are happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hershkowitz. I do not see any trustees with hands raised. There we go. Trustee Shelby.
Yes, first of all, thank you, Kevin, and thank you, Donna. Thank you, Kevin, for that presentation. It was much easier for me to put into context these 16 pages that you put together rather than the 238 that were in my packet. But that's my own inability to internalize quickly, but it would be great if we could get a copy of, of this presentation that you provided today because it was very succinct. And I'd love to use this to refer back to in the future. Sure. Thank you.
That is a point very well taken and I concur. Anyone else? Any questions? Any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So just for the benefit of the
Uh, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So just for the benefit of the um incoming trustees, the Client Security Fund, I think, is one of the the best things that the bar does, and that's to make victims of attorney misconduct uh whole or attempt to try and do that. And so that was um a major component of our fee increase uh request. And it's really uh encouraging to see that um that fund has been replenished and that victims of attorney misconduct can be uh remunerated. So well done to staff in getting us to a point where we can um help remedy some of those situations.
Thank you, Brandon. Okay, seeing no requests uh to speak or ask questions, I will open the floor to a motion.
Eric Jose, I'll make the motion.
Sonia here, seconding.
First by trustee Cisnetos, second by trustee Delan to approve staff recommended resolution. Madam Secretary.
So here here is the resolution.
Um I do see one, I just I do see the one uh or the two rather, looks like typographical error type corrections.
Well, I just happened to notice on the last slide that the articulation was slightly different, not a material difference, but I just copied it over.
Um, great.
Okay, Broughton. Um, okay, Chen. Sisneros.
Hi.
Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yes.
Gonong.
Yes.
Portula.
Yes.
Shelby.
Hi.
Solo.
Hi.
Stallings.
Yes.
Tony.
Hi.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Again, uh, Mr. Harper, uh, Ms. Hershkowitz and your entire staff, thank you very much.
I am trying to stop sharing this and uh Doug, do you have? Oh, here it is. Okay. There you go.
Okay, item 702 is proposed proposed revisions to State Bar Rule 4.90 regarding testing accommodations, a request to circulate for public comment. Ms. Hershkowitz.
Uh, can we promote Lisa Cummins?
Thank you. There you are. Good afternoon and welcome, Ms. Cummins. You're on mute, but when you unmute, uh, we'd love to hear a staff report.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair and members of the Board of uh Trustees. The this agenda item 702 presents uh proposed revisions to State Bar Rule um 4.90, which governs the uh procedures for um requesting review, applicants to request review of staff decisions to um deny or partially deny requests for testing accommodations for uh for the um exams that are administered by the State Bar of California. Um, the proposed revisions are uh needed to clarify and streamline the existing review procedures, uh primarily um addressing the scope of review uh that the Committee of Bar Examiners has, as well as the number of times that an applicant can appeal um uh each administration of the exam. And um lastly, the timing of the uh when the requests need to be made by. Um, the Committee of Bar Examiners has already uh reviewed these uh proposed changes and recommends that the Board of Trustees uh circulate the um requested changes for a 45, a 45 day period of public comment. Uh, the main uh things that are um uh it is meant to address or that uh right now, the rule is a bit unclear and can be made clearer with respect to the number of times that an applicant can appeal a decision that's made by staff with regard to um the request for testing accommodations. And uh in fact, uh applicants do um appeal uh multiple occasions for um every exam. And so um this uh um clarification will uh be able to allow staff to focus more on um the, you know, uh the staff time as well as committee's time on um addressing people who have first time um requests for review and um not to have um spend that additional time on multiple requests for uh the committee to look at their own decision. Um so it does limit the um uh appeal to one time per exam. Uh, the applicants do have the ability to appeal to the Supreme Court uh as well as they can appeal for the next exam. Uh, it also clarifies that the uh Committee of Bar Examiners reviews only the testing accommodations that have been denied by staff and not to revisit uh accommodations that have already been granted by staff. Um and currently, the um the rule states that the uh deadline for uh filing a request for review to the Committee of Bar Examiners is the first day of the month of the exam. Uh, this rule seeks to, the original of the rule seeks to change that to uh no later than 35 days before the exam. And uh that serves um a a couple of functions. One is that it allows staff more time to be able to uh deal with all the appeals. Uh, it does happen that there are a lot of people who file appeals uh at or near the deadline. Um and then also, um it it provides for more certainty as to when that appeal deadline is. Um and uh, for example, a a more, a most recent example is that the um Supreme Court moved the date of the bar exam, uh the last July 2019 bar exam to October uh fifth and sixth, which is uh obviously very, very close to the first of the month um when normally the exam takes place um at the uh the first, the last Tuesday and Wednesday of um February as well as July. So that 35 days before the exam um is uh provides more certainty in those kind of situations, certainly um that you, you know, you have the uh 35 days rather than the first of the month. Um, and those are the uh the main points that the agenda items six to to make. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Cummins. Any questions for Ms. Cummins? Any commentary or discussion from the board? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion uh to approve for public comment circulation, the uh reference will change.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Stallings, is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Gonong, thank you, Madam Secretary. I think you're on mute. Still on mute. Madam Secretary, can we take the vote? The resolution is on the screen, thank you.
I'm so sorry, I was muted. Um, Broughton.
Epstein.
Chen. Sisneros.
Hi.
Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yes.
Gonong.
Yes.
Portula.
Yes.
Shelby.
Trustee Shelby, you're not showing as mute, but your vote did not register audibly.
Aye.
There you go.
Was that an aye?
Yes.
Thank you. Solo.
Hi.
Stallings.
Yes.
Tony.
Hi.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Let's move on to item 703. Approval of Legal Specialization Examination Fee Reduction, and I anticipate um at least one, maybe two recusals. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, I will need to recuse. So uh, so I'll leave the Zoom room and someone will advise me when to return.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Broughton, I believe you were going to recuse yourself as well. Okay.
Uh trustee Broughton, to clarify for the record, has also recused. Uh, both these gentlemen are um specialists as designated designated by the bar, so they uh have chosen to recuse out of the buttons of caution. We can have a staff report, please.
Hi, good afternoon. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Jing.
Hi, um, well, this item dovetails nicely with the discussion from 701 about the budget. You might remember, you just recently saw that legal specialization is above the 30% um allowed by the board. So the Office of Admissions and the California Board of Legal Specialization have determined that a reduction in exam fees for the 2021 Legal Specialist Exam would be an appropriate way to spend down the Legal Specialization Reserve Balance. A similar action was taken by the Board of Trustees in 2016 in advance of the 2017 Legal Specialist Exam. The item before you proposes to cut the exam registration to $100 from 350 to waive all laptop fees and to only have one late fee of $150 um to encourage timely filing. These fee reductions are projected to reduce revenue from the exam by 66.7 to 80% and to bring the Legal Specialization Fund down. Are there any questions?
Oh, yeah.
I hate to interrupt, but I need to recuse myself from this item, so I will leave and come back.
Thank you, Mr. Broughton.
No, no, thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Jing? Seeing none, any discussion from the board? Also seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
So moved.
Motion by Stallings.
I'll second, Jose.
Second by Cisnetos. Thank you, gentlemen, Madam Secretary.
Broughton is recused. Chen. Sisneros.
Hi.
Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yes.
Duran. Um, excuse me, ignore, disregard that. Gonong.
Yes.
Portula.
Yes.
Shelby. Solo.
Yes.
Stallings.
Yes.
Tony.
Hi.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Thank you, Ms. Jing. Uh, we're so conditioned to respond when our names are called. That's pretty funny. Uh, item 704. Is the Ad-Hoc Commission on Discipline System, Appointment of Members, uh Ms. Gonong and or Mr. Stallings, please.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So I will be taking uh the initial portion and talking a little bit about the non-trusty uh members, and because I I am one of the trustees who is recommended to serve on this commission, I'll hand that portion over to Ms. Gonong. Uh, so for this um for this appointment agenda item, uh just to remind everybody, the Ad-Hoc Commission on the Discipline System um at the November 19, 2020 meeting, uh the board approved a charter that would guide uh the commission's work. And that involves reviewing and evaluating procedural justice, workload and operational efficiency, case prioritization uh and the efficacy of the system for preventing future uh attorney misconduct. And so the Ad-Hoc Commission is going to serve a very important function in reviewing uh different state bar initiatives and uh the um Office of a Chief Trial Counsel. Uh, so the board gave the commission or the those appointing uh members to the commission a pretty uh broad latitude in um who to select. Uh, there were guidelines as far as uh picking individuals from Council on Access and Fairness, California Medical Board, Department of Consumer Affairs, uh just to name a few. And so um this um, there was an extensive um search done for individuals interested in serving on this commission. There were 33 applications that were submitted. And uh Ms. Gonong and I uh worked diligently to go through uh them as well as review staff's recommendations. So Lisa Chavez put in a uh a gargantuan amount of work to get this put together on short notice. And so I want to applaud her uh for her her efforts in this. You will see from the non-board member uh recommendations, a a very diverse uh group of individuals. We uh looked at our diversity matrix to uh help inform some of our decisions. And really, we wanted to um have diversity of backgrounds as well as um viewpoints uh to serve on this commission. Um, as far as the number of defense attorneys or those coming from a defense background and then those coming from prosecution or a prosecution or regulatory background, we have a pretty good parity. Uh, there are seven coming from the prosecution and regulator uh background and then six coming from the defense uh background. The individual that is going to be recommended, well, I'll I'll let Ms. Gonong talk about the uh chair and then the uh commission vice chairs, or vice chair rather. Um, but we are still actively looking for a um appellate justice to help in this. And so if there are any appellate justices out there listening, who have a uh interest in this work, I would invite you to contact either uh myself, uh Chair Saleig or Vice Chair Duran and uh I talk with us further. So uh that is my presentation on the non-trusty members, and I'll hand it over to uh Ms. Gonong.
Good afternoon. So uh my portion of the presentation is um going to be the Commission um Chair and Commission Vice Chair for um this commission. So the the Commission uh Chair would be um Vice Chair um Ruben Duran. And just a little bit of a background for um about Mr. Uh Duran for um the members of the public who are um listening in uh in this uh meeting. Commission Chair Duran is the Vice Chair of the Board of Trustees appointed by the Speaker of the Assembly. In his legal practice, Mr. Duran represents public agencies as a partner at the municipal and government policy and public integrity practice groups at Best and Best Rigger LOB. The Vice Chair for uh this commission would be our uh Board of Trustees Chair, Sean Saleig. Sean Saleig, um briefly, uh as a matter of background, is the Chair of the Board of Trustees and is the litigation partner at Arnold and Porter. Mr. Saleig has served on the board since 2016, first by election and currently by the appointment of the California Supreme Court. In addition to Mr. Duran and Mr. Saleig, um, Mr. Brandon Stallings, who is also a Supreme Court appointee uh here in the California State Bar Board of Trustees, uh will be appointed as the third uh trustee in this uh commission. Um, Mr. Uh Stallings is a um currently the Chair of the RAD Committee or the uh Regulation and Discipline Committee and has served in this capacity since 2019. During his tenure, he has helped to transition the state bar from being a hybrid regulatory trade association entity to its current um more narrowly focused mission as a purely regulatory agency. So those are the three Board of Trustee members who are going to be serving this 21 uh member uh ad hoc uh committee. Uh, if you have uh questions, you may direct it to me or Mr. Stallings or um the staff uh member who um assisted us in preparing this report.
Excuse me, can someone promote uh Mark Broughton back in?
Thank you, Ms. Holton, for catching that. Thank you, trustees Stallings and Gonong. I see trustee Shelby has her hand raised.
Thank you. I just had a question. I certainly trust the recommendations of my fellow trustees, but I noted, and I may be incorrect, that um there doesn't appear to be any representation by African American men, either in the recommended membership or in the applicants. And so I was curious about the conversation that transpired around that.
Vice Chair, if I could, can I have Lisa just talk about the outreach that was undertaken?
Sure, thank you, trustee Stallings, Ms. Chavez.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Hi, can anyone hear me? Yes, okay, so we conducted a bright outreach in a variety of ways. First, our executive director personally reached out to all the stakeholder groups that are listed on the stakeholder list. I'm encouraging people to encourage their members to apply. And then state bar staff tracked down the emails for all affinity bar associations in the state of California from a website, I believe it's our website, at least fifty organizations. And again, our executive director sent an email out to every single one of those organizations encouraging folks to apply. So that was our outreach.
Okay, I appreciate that, I would just offer that, you know, this commission will be dealing with the findings of the disproportionate discipline imposed on African-American male attorneys, and it would, I think it would be useful to have the perspective of African-American male attorneys. And so if there was an opportunity to, I'm not quite sure what the stakeholder list looks like. Again, I am not an attorney, but I have been focused on diversity and inclusion for the last twenty-five years across multiple disciplines, and I'd certainly be happy to aid in any way in terms of outreach. But I do think it would be important, from a representation standpoint, to maybe extend the opportunity to see if we could fill that void, thank you, though.
Definitely, we share in that desire. You know, as part of the affinity bar associations who are reached out to, different multicultural bar alliances. And I would also note that there is broad discretion in appointing members to this commission. And so if, I think we could definitely open that up for discussion if individuals applied to this commission. I think that's certainly something that we can take back to the board and recommend the addition of additional members.
Thank you for that, I noticed that there were the opportunity for alternatives, for alternates, excuse me. And so if there's anything that I can do to be helpful in terms of your outreach, I would offer myself.
We would welcome that.
Yeah, I think.
Thank you, Melanie.
I thank you for that, trustee Shelby, because I was going to make one small clarification to what Brandon said, otherwise I think he was spot on, but I think we certainly can do outreach to fill that additional position and not simply be open to receiving applications, but doing some more affirmative outreach on that, and your help would be appreciated.
Thank you, everyone.
I'd also like to offer to be helpful as far as that goes as well.
Wonderful, and if I could, as the proposed chair of the commission, I would just thank trustee Shelby for raising that important issue. And I did note in the the intended makeup of the commission, that the chair and the vice chair do have some discretion and ability to recruit members to the committee, so to the commission. So I would definitely appreciate any assistance, any of the trustees could have in recommending someone. Certainly, in-person outreach from a member of the Board of Trustees, I think, would be helpful and significant and something as important as this, so. Any other questions for Ms. Chavez, Mr. Stallings, or Ms. Gonon? Seeing none, any discussion? Likewise, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. The resolution is presented for your consideration on the screen, thank you, Madam Secretary.
And just a brief word about the projected resolution, it was modified somewhat because this item was taken off of the the agenda of the executive committee and brought straight to the board. So some minor modifications were made to reflect that.
This is Jose, I'll move it.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
I'll move it as modified.
Motion by Cisneros.
I'll second, this is one.
Was that one?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
And Mr. Vice Chair just.
Go ahead, Ben.
So I stand by the recommendations, I will be recusing myself because I am one of the individuals seeking appointment.
Okay. Madam Secretary of the role, please.
Broughton.
Yes.
Chen. Cisneros.
Aye.
Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Dellen.
Yes.
Gonon.
Yes.
Pertula.
Yes.
Shelby. Soo.
Yes.
Stallings is recused, and Tony.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone, I'm looking at the clock, we are coming up on two hours since our last break. Before, we already considered item seven oh five, you recall, so before we go to the last item on the metrics, I would beg your indulgence for a ten-minute break, is that okay with everybody? Let's come back at two thirty? Thank you. An update on the state bar metrics, I see Ms. Chavez is with us already, Ms. Truszkiewicz, will you go first? Or will Ms. Chavez go first?
I'll introduce the item and then let Lisa take over, because she's done the heavy lifting on it. So the state bar strategic plan required that we develop goals and objectives for each functional areas of the bar and use those to develop organizational performance metrics. And we did just that, and in late twenty eighteen, early twenty nineteen, presented a series, a set of metrics to the board, which the board adopted. We have been reporting to the board on those metrics every board meeting since. Some of the metrics were monthly, some quarterly, some yearly, some were one-time and others ongoing metrics. And it's been two years, and we've had the opportunity to see how we are performing on those metrics. And I think frankly, we've gotten a little bit more sophisticated on assessing what are the types of things we should be measuring. As they say, right, you do what you measure, and we certainly want to make sure that we are measuring all the right things. So at the end of twenty twenty, we took the opportunity to circle back with all of the state bar offices and ask them to review the metrics that they were reporting on to the board and to update them, to eliminate ones that have proven not to make a lot of sense, to eliminate ones frankly, that we meet or far exceed the metric, the target every time, and will continue to meet or far exceed without the need to report that, to add new metrics to really capture some of the new or different work that we're doing or work that we weren't capturing in metrics before. So what we have presented before you today is that updated list of metrics that we propose to be reporting on a going-forward basis. Ms. Chavez can talk a little bit about the timeline that we plan to be reporting to the board on, which is slightly different than we have been in the past, and correct everything that I said that maybe was incorrect. Lisa?
Thank you, I was going to say, let's just go ahead and move to resolution, but let me just add a few more details. But unfortunately, I rely a lot of PowerPoints to get me through my presentation, so I'm going to just share my screen, and I'll just probably just skip ahead to, can everyone see my screen? Okay, so let me just skip ahead to just one item I just want to add is that we report the metrics to the Board of Trustees at every board meeting, and the metrics report is attached to the executive director's report. And in her report, that's an opportunity for the executive director to share highlights as well as, you know, drawing attention to metrics that did meet their targets and what offices plan to do in the future to meet those targets. We also present some metrics to two committees. For the Regulation and Discipline Committee, we do a share out of the metrics coming from these offices that are under RAD's purview, and so that's its own agenda item for RAD. And for the Finance Committee also receives metrics for these offices as well. And that's just an opportunity for each of these committees to dig a little deeper into the metrics, ask questions, et cetera. So that's one detail piece I'd like to add, let's see what else I have here. Um, just like as Donna said, you know, we met with the, our staff met with the office leaders to review their metrics, and we revised language, we added and phased out in the, in attachment A lists eighty-seven metrics that we'll be tracking going forward, and I just want to draw attention to that. There's three metrics that are actually bar-wide metrics, but we have them housed under an office. And what we mean by bar-wide is that there's three metrics where, even though it seems as though it belongs under the purview of an office, ultimately, the performance of those metrics involved other offices and in some cases, staff across the entire organization. One example of those metrics is under finance, has to do with processing invoices within a certain time period. Ultimately, the finance office depends on staff getting those invoices to them, so that since it's a bar-wide metric, but they're ultimately responsible for putting the conditions in place to receive those invoices, you know, timely. Human Resources has a metric that measures completing performance evaluations timely. Again, you know, all managers across the organization are responsible for performance for that, but it's under Human Resources. And the last one has to do with the respondent representation metric, that's under OCTC right now, but this is also a metric that is really, several offices work together to create the conditions where we're going to see respondent representation increase. So those are three I'd like to draw your attention to, and the last thing I'd like to say is that our agenda item calls for changing the distribution schedule. Like I mentioned before, for the last year and a half, we've been submitting our metrics report every board meeting, so six times a year, and we'd like to switch it to three times a year, mostly because we'd like to give office leaders an opportunity to have more time in between gathering data on our metrics and reporting them out to actually spend more time frequently reflecting on their metrics and to act upon them. And so this is the distribution schedule, so we will be producing metrics reports in March, July, and November of this year. And the column on the left just shows, it kind of shows the content of the metrics, depending on whether something's a monthly metric or quarterly or semi-annual or annual. So the resolution calls for adopting these metrics to track as well as the new distribution schedule.
Thank you, Ms. Chavez.
Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Chavez or Ms. Truszkiewicz on the board? Seeing none, any discussion on the proposed resolution and staff recommendation? Thank you, by the way, Lisa, for your work on this, important stuff.
You're welcome.
So Vice Chair, I would move the agenda item.
I second.
Trustee Stallings. Trustee Dellen, seconds. Madam Secretary of the role. Please.
Broughton.
There you go.
Yes.
Chen. Cisneros.
Aye.
Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Dellen.
Yes.
Gonon.
Yes.
Pertula.
Yes.
Shelby.
Aye.
Soo.
Aye.
Stallings.
Yes.
Tony.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much, thank you, everyone, for a lot of hard and good work today. Hate to tell you, folks, but the board is not done yet. Donna, kudos to you and your staff for presenting all some very good material. Thank you to the members of the public who joined us on the discussion of seven oh five, I see most of them are gone now, which is completely understandable. At this point, we will reconvene back in the closed session to finish our consideration of the items that we left yesterday. As a reminder to the trustees, you received an email from Mr. McLeod, I believe, with the link to the closed session Zoom area.
Chair, the Zoom link from yesterday is no longer the link, I just sent the new link for today's closed session.
Okay, great, thank you for that clarification. Any questions or comments from anybody before we adjourn back in the closed session? Okay, thanks, we'll see you on the other side, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for your patience, we will be wrapping this up momentarily, and it will be quick, I promise. Let me just wait for one or two more last-minute details. Okay, again, thank you for your patience, ladies and gentlemen. The board met in closed session to consider the items as listed on the agenda. Item. The legal match item was not considered, I'm going to report on item seven thousand five. Return to open session without any information that must be legally reported under the Bagley-Keen Act. Without waiving the confidentiality of the closed session, however, the board has determined to report a resolution that it passed with a unanimous vote of the board on item seven thousand five, which was the discussion regarding the appointment of the state bar executive director. The resolution made by trustee Tony, seconded by trustee Gonon, is as follows. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees delegates to trustees Duran and Soo Well the development and implementation of a plan for the immediate recruitment of a state bar executive director and the return of proposed candidates to the board for consideration. That was a unanimous vote of all thirteen board members present and voting. And with that, we will adjourn this meeting, thank you all for your hard work over the past two days, and I hope you all have a good weekend and everyone is safe and healthy. Take care, bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.